Mr. Mombin. Mr. Mombin. Okay, okay, perfect.
We'll go ahead and get started and hopefully Alex can join us soon. It's 6:02. And we're going to go into our work session. Item one, work session to discuss the feasibility of the urban renewal district and how tax increment financing works. Staff report by Mr. Face.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This evening, we have a work session in regards to feasibility study that was done to look at potential urban renewal districts in Cottage Grove. This effort was undertaken under the guidance of Pro Town C manager, Mr. Klein. He directed us to pursue this. He had a very positive experience in former city that he was C manager of and felt that Cottage Grove was ripe for with the Main Street revitalization grant and various different things would potentially be right to use this mechanism to address the blight and improve our economic opportunities. So this evening, we have this Elaine Howard from Elaine Howard Consulting LLC. She'll be here to she's here to present two potential areas that the city could consider, council could consider as urban renewals. Districts, I would share that the city Cottage Grove did have a previous urban renewal district that closed out in 2003 and that area was the Row River Road near Walmart and Village Green. That actual urban renewal district created the revenue and the projects were completed before the timeline for the district, it was accessible venture that one was so. So with that, I'd like to invite Elaine up to give her presentation and answer your questions.
It's kind of red. Good evening, I'm Elaine Howard. I have my own consulting firm and I've been doing a renewal consulting since 2005. And I work with Tiberius Solutions, Nick Popanuk of Tiberius does all of our financial analysis. In this feasibility study, we looked at two potential boundaries. Those are not set in stone in any way. So if you decide you are interested in urban renewal and want to move ahead, any new boundary or boundary change or addition can be looked at. We just look at two potential boundaries to give you an idea of the potential for a renewal in your community. Next slide, please. What we will go through is an urban renewal basics and then the findings from the feasibility study and next steps if you so choose to move ahead. Next slide. First of all, a lot of people misunderstand urban renewal because they believe it is a new tax. It is not a new tax. It is a division of taxes that people already pay. So a long time ago, urban renewal used to be a new tax when measures five, forty, seven, and fifty were voted on and approved in Oregon. The way urban renewal was funded became a different financing mechanism. And it is no longer a new tax, although if you have urban renewal in your community, it is written as a line item on every property tax bill, so that becomes confusing. And as we go through the PowerPoint, I can explain why that is. Next slide. Next slide. When we all get our property tax bills, thank you. Thank you. I feel like I'm spitting at the slide or something. When we get our property tax bills in end of October, we pay them in November and our property tax payments are given to the assessor and distributed directly to all of the different regular taxing jurisdictions. That's the city, the county, the school district and any special districts. Next slide. In Oregon, our property taxes increase really for only two reasons. We have a limited three percent increase in our property tax assessed values. That's just our assessed values, our real market values can go up by whatever the real market does. But we're not taxed on real market values. Excuse me, we're taxed on assessed values and there's a limit to those increases to three percent per year. Unless we do substantial rehabilitation on our property or we have a blank piece of property or a property on which we do new construction. Either of those two events can allow the assessor to reassess property and to reestablish what your assessed value is. Next slide. If you establish an urban renewal area within your city, that's indicated by the blue within that green circle. At the time, the urban renewal area is established, the assessor does a frozen basis as value of that area. That doesn't mean the property taxes are frozen. It just is a mechanism by which the property tax income stream is then divided. And the value of the property at the time that urban renewal area is established, the taxes off that continue going to all of those regular taxing jurisdictions. But any increase in value from rehab, new construction, or that three percent goes to the urban renewal agency to do projects, programs and provide administration of the area. Next slide. This just shows how that works in concept. So the green across the bottom indicates that frozen base. So the assessed value at the time an urban renewal area could be established. The blue represents over time that increase in value within the area and the taxes off of that going to your urban renewal agency instead of going to the regular taxing districts. Next slide. So what is urban renewal in Oregon? Urban renewal is used as an economic development tool. It's unique in that it has financing attached to a plan that the city council could decide to adopt. So a lot of times we do plans that are a downtown development plan or a master plan or comprehensive plan. But we don't have money to implement those plans. Urban renewal has that financing source tied to it that gives you the ability to implement plans. By statute, it's used to address blighting influences within an urban renewal area. Blight is specifically defined in the statute and we'll come to another slide on that in a minute. And urban renewal functions off of the increases in property taxes within the urban renewal area. It's used all over Oregon. Next slide. This shows a map of urban renewal across the state. It's used all up and down the I five corridor in most of the major cities up and down the coast. Almost all of the major coastal cities have one or more urban renewal areas. And then in Southern Oregon, all of those main cities except Rogue River have an urban renewal area and then you can see out I eighty-four also. So it's very widely used across the state of Oregon. Next slide. So why do cities decide they want to use urban renewal? They decide they want to use urban renewal. And in your case, if you look at your downtown and you walk up and down your town and you look at the number of buildings that can be improved, the number of vacant storefront spaces, the number of vacant upper floor spaces. And you envision what your downtown could look like if those buildings were rehabilitated and put into productive use. That is a reason a lot of cities in decide to use urban renewal in their downtowns. Because one of the projects that can be undertaken with urban renewal is rehabilitation of existing structures, storefront loans, working with business, trying to get businesses established within your area. The city has general funds that you are obligated to use for providing services. But you typically do not have the kind of funding to allocate to rehabilitation efforts within your city. A lot of times you have funding for utilities, but maybe not the amount of funding that you need to put in new utilities or streets or streetscape. And urban renewal can be used as a funding source for any of those types of projects. Next slide. So what is blight? Blight is specifically defined in the statute that governs urban renewal. Whenever you adopt a new urban renewal plan, you have to specify that there are blighting conditions within your area. Nobody likes to say that their community is blighted, but the statute requires to establish an urban renewal plan. You have to establish what the blight is. Typically, in the urban renewal areas that I work on in the state and I work on probably eighty percent of those areas that get established in state under development or under utilization is the key identifier of blight. So having buildings that aren't to their full use is under utilization of properties. Poor conditions of buildings is decided definition of blight and inadequacy of infrastructure, including streets and utilities. So those are the key identifiers of light that we use. When I look at the boundary areas that we looked at, there is plenty of conditions that would satisfy turning either of those boundary areas into an urban renewal. An urban renewal area is a separate entity, agency, separate energy from the city council. You've had one before, but I don't believe any of you, probably you were, okay. So you have to do an annual budget, just as you do a city budget. But it's a separate process, it has to be kept separate because it is a separate entity. You have that income source, which is the property tax revenues. You have your expenses, projects, programs, administration. And you have something called a spending limit. Why I have. Which is called maximum indebtedness. Maximum indebtedness is unique to urban renewal. It is the total amount of money that you may spend on projects, programs and administration over the life of an urban renewal area. The life of an urban renewal area can be twenty, twenty-five or thirty years. You have to establish that maximum indebtedness at the time you establish the urban renewal area. So you are doing projections out over time of what kind of development you think will occur within the urban renewal area or over a specific time period. And then take those projections and establish a maximum indebtedness. And that's what Tiberius Solutions, the other consulting firm that worked with me on this report does for me on all new urban renewal plans and amendments to plans. Next slide. This just shows another view of how tax increment financing works. So it shows that frozen base, the assessed value of all properties within the area at the time it's established. This does a better job of showing that urban renewal starts slowly over time because you're typically relying on that three percent increase, which is a small increase. And so it takes some time for the amount of money to come in to be able to actually do projects and programs within your area. And then as you start doing those and a rehab project happens or new development happens. And then you get a bump up in those property taxes and then you're getting your three percent not only on that base value, but on that new development or rehabilitation within the area. So that causes that increment to grow. Once an urban renewal area is completed, all of that property tax revenue is returned back to the regular tax stream. So it goes back to all of the different taxing districts to use on projects and programs of their own in providing their own services. Next slide. I've had, when I've made these presentations at the League of Oregon Cities and I've had city council members come up to me and ask, well, why can't we just use our own city tax rate to establish funding within an area? And you could potentially to decide to do that. What urban renewal does is leverages your own tax rate. So in in this particular slide, if you look at the city of Cottage Grove's tax rate, it is forty, I believe that's an eight, forty-eight percent of the total tax rate. So instead of just getting forty-eight percent of every dollar, if you establish an urban renewal area, you get that full dollar of property tax revenue that comes in. So you are able to leverage your forty-eight cents to get that other fifty-two cents that's paid on a property tax bill for every when when property taxes are paid. So you're able to get more money into your bucket of money to use to do programs and projects within an urban renewal area. Next slide. This helps to explain how that works on a property tax bill. So the average value of property in Cottage Grove is three hundred and eighty thousand. At least that's what Zillow provided me. And your tax rate is fifteen point one eight seven oh. So if you have a property with a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar value and you multiply it times that tax rate, you'll pay seven thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars for your property tax bill. Next year, that will go up by three percent. All of those separate categories go up by three percent. Your overall tax bill goes up by three percent. If this went into an urban renewal area between this year and next year, when the assessor calculates your values for this property, the assessor calculates that three percent, but that three percent doesn't go to the property taxing jurisdictions. It goes to urban renewal area. So you can see in the second and fourth columns, the amount that the taxing districts get is the same amount as the value the preceding year. That's what they continue getting their taxes off of, including your own city. And that extra amount goes to the urban renewal area. This is done for every property within the urban renewal area. And then the assessor has to take that amount of money. And let's say your first year, that's twenty thousand dollars. And instead of just collecting that on the property tax bills within the urban renewal area, they have to spread that on every property tax bill within the city. And that is again, because of measures five, forty, seven and fifty, which determined that urban renewal had to fall under either the ten dollars per general government or the five dollars per education cap limit. So they put urban renewal under the general government camp cap. It has to be counted there and the assessors and the Department of Revenue determine the only way to adequately do that was to assess that within the entire municipality that implements urban renewal. Again, it doesn't mean it increases anybody's property taxes, but it is confusing because it's on their property tax bill as a line item. If you have an urban renewal area and that urban renewal area goes away, people might expect their property tax bill to go down, but it doesn't because that money just gets redistributed to those other property taxing districts. Next slide. So this is just a summary of all of that. Property taxes do not increase due to urban renewal. It is a division of taxes. The impact is on taxing districts. The assessor has to decide that amount of impact every year by calculating the increase in the assessed value of every property within the urban renewal area, coming up with a total distributing that amount citywide and then gathering that money in and distributing it to the urban renewal agency. Next slide. A lot of times people say, well, you're doing urban renewal and we're losing that three percent. Yes, you're losing the three percent. But if you're able to incentivize growth to happen within your area that wouldn't have happened, but for the projects that you are doing within the area, then you are causing new growth to happen that wouldn't have happened. I presented to and Council Flick, I don't know if you were here then, but I presented to Cottage Grove in the probably around two thousand and five or two thousand and six early.
I did. Yeah, I was elected in two thousand and two.
Okay, so we did a feasibility study then and the city council decided not to move ahead. If you had actually implemented urban renewal at that time, you would be twenty years into it now, so you would be receiving fairly substantial funds where you could actually be addressing some of the blight that happens within your city, some of the buildings. And yours was one of the few studies I've ever done that we didn't move ahead. But at that time, it wasn't right for your city and and we didn't. But when you go out and walk your main street and look at the condition of your downtown, I think we can all agree that it could use some help. Next slide. School districts are treated a little differently than regular taxing districts. They are not directly impacted by urban renewal. Your school districts next site are funded on a per pupil basis. For regular taxing districts, that amount of money goes straight from the assessor's office to a regular taxing district. Urban renewal takes that money before it goes to the assessor's office or the assessor distributes it directly back to urban renewal. Next slide. For the state school fund, this is the formulas for our state school fund. It is very complicated. Urban renewal impacts up at the top because it impacts the amount of permanent rate levy money that goes into the state school fund. The legislature has authority to backfill that money from under other funding sources and does backfill. So any community that adopts an urban renewal plan does not receive any less money on a per pupil basis for their students than if they had not adopted a plan. Any plan adopted in Eugene or Florence or any other community doesn't impact their schools, also doesn't impact your school directly. It impacts the state school fund, but the legislature has the ability to backfill that. Next slide. There are limitations on urban renewal areas for a population of a city under fifty thousand. You may have up to twenty-five percent of your assessed value in an urban renewal area and up to twenty-five percent of your acreage. Once you have an existing plan, you may never increase it by more than twenty percent of the original acreage. So you always want to make sure if you're doing a new plan that you have all of the acreage in it, that you think that you will want in it, understanding that it's a twenty-five year to thirty year plan. The maximum indebtedness, that spending limit can only be increased through a large process, the same process as adopting a new plan and may only be increased by twenty percent of your original maximum indebtedness as influx indexed by inflation. Unless other taxing districts will concur with that increase. So that number is pretty hard and fast and pretty hard to increase. Next number, next slide. This is the process for a new plan or a substantial amendment. You are to allow public input at all phases in the process. You decide you want to prepare a plan and report that planning report is prepared and taken to the urban renewal agency. The agency decides whether they like the plan or and decides whether to send it out for a formal review, which is to all of the different taxing districts for a forty-five day time period to the county for a presentation, they don't get to vote on it, but they get a formal presentation made at a meeting to the planning commission for review for conformance to your comprehensive plan and to the city council for a hearing, which is advertised citywide. And then consideration of a non-emergency ordinance. Next slide. There are project limitations. The types of things that you can do with urban renewal are usually classified under sticks and bricks. So it's improvements to facilities, sewer lines, water lines, streets, sidewalks or buildings. It is not to be used for it can be used for a plan that then turns into like a transportation system plan update that turns into actually spending money on capital projects and capital plans. But it can't be used for social services like homeless services. It can't be used for fire district services for paying for their personnel. It's used for capital expenditures. Next slide. So we looked at two potential boundaries for an urban renewal area. And can you look at the next slide and see if we have those boundaries? Yes, let's look at the boundaries quickly and then we'll come back to that slide. So this is boundary one, which is basically your your downtown kind of core area and surrounding areas. And next slide. Oh, okay, let's just, okay, all that's boundary two, which takes your core area and then go goes out along the highway. So if we can go back, please to the, yes. We did feasibility studies on two different boundaries in terms of assessed value limitations and acreage limitations. Both of those boundaries work for an urban renewal area. The first boundary is seven point four percent of your assessed value and five point nine percent of your acreage. And the second boundary is twelve point seven percent of your assessed value and seven point nine percent of your acreage. So your limitation is twenty-five percent, so well below your limitations. Next slide. This is the boundary one again, and we can come back to that at the end. Next slide. So we looked at two different growth scenarios for this area, kind of a low growth scenario and a high growth scenario. Just to give you ballpark estimates of what we think might be able to be accomplished in terms of revenue in urban renewal area. And we looked at the amount of real market value increase that would be needed for either of those growth scenarios and came up with what the maximum indebtedness might be over. This is over a thirty year timeframe. So on a low growth scenario and Mr. Stewart, I believe that was just three percent. Do you remember? And I think the high growth was four or four point five, so not, not very high. So the capacity, the maximum indebtedness would be between nineteen point six million dollars and twenty-nine point eight million dollars. So that's the difference, a couple of percentage points of growth can make in terms of your ability over a thirty year timeframe. That maximum indebtedness again is over thirty years. So we looked at, so the fourth row down says capacity twenty twenty-four dollars. That would be if you're looking at the cost of projects in today's dollars, the amount of projects that you could buy with that maximum indebtedness, knowing that those projects will increase in cost over time. So for the low growth scenario, that's eleven point two million dollars and in the high growth sixteen point six million dollars. And again, when you look at years one through five, the amount of capacity is relatively small because we're relying just on that three percent growth and it grows over time. We show that growth over five year increments. Again, if you decided you wanted to move ahead, but you felt like thirty year timeframe was too long, we we would look at this and bring that back to a twenty-five year timeframe to take a look at what that might be for you. When we do plans and we've done over a hundred urban renewal plans and substantial amendments over the last twenty years that I've been doing this, typically in a community your size, this timeframe of a plan is twenty-five to thirty years because it takes so long for it to get going at the beginning. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to clarify the the growth in the packet. It was saying new potential for new future construction. So what are we meaning by by growth and the high, high growth, low growth? Is that new, new? Is that new new properties that are coming in sort of? So if we do projects that are like streets or something non new construction, then you can't expect you would have to target projects that. Either target high growth in terms of new taxable structures.
Or help facilitate growth. So sometimes. If we do street improvements or a water line to an area that can't develop because it doesn't have capacity to develop. Or doesn't have the street network to develop and that provides the capacity for the property to develop. Then that helps provide that incentive for growth. If you work on one of your existing buildings and that becomes reassessed. And the taxes go up, then that provides that capacity for growth. Next slide. So for that boundary one, these are both a twenty five year duration and a thirty year duration of what those impacts would be on the taxing jurisdictions. So those impacts are them not getting less taxes than they get now. But not getting the increased taxes in the future, including that three percent growth. So for the city of college Cottage Grove itself for a twenty five year duration. It would be between seven point one million and ten point two. And for a thirty year duration between ten point eight million and sixteen point three million. And again, on the education. All three of those education districts are part of a backfill formula, so they are not directly impacted. So it's really the general government categories that do have that direct impact of urban renewal. Next slide. This is the boundary two, which is a little larger, but incorporates a lot of area that is. Really underdeveloped, so developed maybe in just the ground floor, drive up. Strip mall type of development that could be a higher and better use or improved use for your community. So the acreage is a little larger in this area, but still well within your twenty five percent. And again, neither of these boundaries are set in stone. So if you decided to move ahead, you can certainly make boundary adjustments. Next slide. So the low growth and high growth here, we're using the same percentage rates. But because it's a little bigger area, the amount of growth necessary is a little higher dollar value. To achieve those percentage growth. But you also then have a higher maximum indebtedness and a higher. Capacity for projects at capacity in twenty twenty four dollars. So if you have the larger area, it's between nineteen point three million and twenty eight point six million. Worth of projects that you could do within the area. Next slide. Again, if the amount of projects you can do is higher, the impacts on the taxing districts is also higher because. That's where the money comes from. For the city of Cottage Grove, for the twenty five year duration, it would be between twelve point two and seventeen point four million. And the thirty year duration between eighteen point five and twenty eight million dollars. Again, that's over a long timeframe and that's only for that area that's within the urban renewal area. You would continue receiving all the property taxes off of all of your property that's outside of that urban renewal area. Next slide. If you decided you wanted to move ahead, these would be the slides you would take. First would be you to determine that you didn't want to move ahead. You do have an urban renewal agency, so you don't have to establish that. You just have to bring it back to life. You would authorize preparation of a plan and report. You would decide whether or not you wanted community input on that. So if you wanted an advisory committee. Or if you wanted to just do the plan and report as an administrative function with your city staff and with your input. If you. When you prepare a planning report, it goes to your agency again. Out to the taxing districts, to the planning commission, to the county commission and then to city council hearing. Next slide. Isn't another one. So I had sent through. Eric, who unfortunately isn't here, of a bunch of slides on potential projects. That can be undertaken with urban renewal. So if somebody wants to look for that, and if there's any way you can bring that up. In the meantime, I have it on a flash drive, but you can't put a flash drive in your system. If anybody, I'm sure there are questions, so I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody wants to follow up. Yes, Councilor Fleck.
So I was coming in on the tail end of urban renewal. In fact, I was one of the guys that voted to shut it down. And when we shut it down, the last project was actually the intersection signalization. At what is now Jim Rightway and Row River Road. And it never met warrants, and so we weren't able to do it. It's an ODOT facility and long story. So we ended up refunding that money back to those other jurisdictions and closed it out. I guess what I'm wondering, you're giving us kind of a a low and a middle estimate for. The each of the different areas. So would you then create projects based on the upper number and then just not do them? If the funding didn't come in, or would you? Or is there a process to add projects if your funding is more?
Yeah, that's a that's a great question. If you move into an urban renewal plan and report. We will pick somewhere in between that low and high or at either end of that low and high and we will do that with input from. Your finance team, your community development team, your city manager on, we have to have a specific number. A lot of times when we're establishing an urban renewal area, we like that number to be a little bit high. Because it gives you a little more authority and you can add projects over time. And you only can spend the amount of money you have, so it doesn't put you in a bad financial position because you won't be. Taking out loans and not be able to repay those loans. You'll only be able to take out a loan. For which you have the amount of money coming in each year that you can debt service that loan. So we we like to have the original estimates be not too conservative because that limits you. We we like it to be in the ballpark, but maybe on the more aggressive side. And if things start moving well, then you have more capacity within your area.
So does that mean that in the, do you actually wait to have your projects for a few years until you actually have enough money for debt service? Or you just add them as that the debt service?
You you, your projects are identified in your original plan, so you have to identify and sometimes it's categories of projects. So redevelopment and development is a category that I think you would be. That would help your city and that doesn't have to identify specific buildings. It just identifies that you want to work with. Property owners to redevelop or develop their properties to make them more functional for your city. So you identify all your projects upfront. And. Identify at this point in time where and when you think you might spend that money. But all of that is non binding, except for that maximum indebtedness number. That's the number that's binding. So many, many times we do an urban renewal area. It takes you a couple of years to get enough money to do a project. A lot changes in a couple of years. And so in two years or three years, whatever we thought was the highest priority now may not be your highest priority in three years. So you decide that you're going to do something different that's in your list, or you can amend your plan and put a new project in. If that's the highest priority. A good example of that is I did a lot of plant plans over the last. Like maybe eight years ago. And over the last four years, I've been going in and amending all of those plans to help provide for affordable housing. Because at the time we wrote the plan, that wasn't a huge issue. City councils didn't want to allocate Monday money or funding to that. But now that's one of the the highest crisis issues that most cities come to me and say, we really have got to do something. Can urban renewal help with that? Did you have a question?
Good evening. I had several questions. I believe when we first started talking about urban renewal, we were seeking funding for street repair. Because that's a big need in our community and we're looking at it as a mechanism. But from what I was trying to read through the packet this weekend and. Didn't get very far as far as understanding it, but it didn't seem that that would be aligned to be a good mechanism.
Street repair is really tricky because it's, urban renewal is not supposed to be used for repair or maintenance. So if it's just repairing a street. Potholes, that type of thing, urban renewal is not an available tool. If it's for rebuilding the street, it is an available tool. So there, I am not an attorney. I can't give you a legal opinion. If you decide to move ahead and that is one of your key issues. Then you would want to bring on legal counsel that could say, we think this. Done to the streets is legal and we can do that and we think this is not. So they they can define that for you, but typically just that repair is not.
Right, thank you. And then I wanted to go back to the blight. Particularly the one under development or under utilization of property. As you were mentioning on Main Street, we have some hollow teeth and some of those have been there at least ten years. I I don't believe it so much the the building is inadequate. I believe the. The property owner is unrealistic in setting a rate and. The building is fine and it's been rehabilitated. It's just that apparently they're getting a tax break well enough. Or they are rich enough to afford to leave it vacant and. I've been asking if there's some way we can apply a blank tax to to generate some money from them. If you want to get a tax write off, how about kicking it down to us?
Wouldn't that be great? In in smaller communities like yours, time and time again. There are buildings that need to be repaired and it's typically an out of town owner. Or it's a family who. Nobody lives here anymore, but somebody used to live here and the building just sits there. I I had one client who called it one funeral at a time until. At some point that estate moves on. And the building sold to somebody who actually wants to do something with it. Because urban renewal can't use eminent domain to purchase the building. So you just have to wait until somebody comes to you or you go to them. And you say it's in our interest to do something here and we'll give you X if you'll develop Y. And and you have to be willing to decide. How worth it it is to you to get that building redone. It's one of the toughest things all over Oregon that we have.
And then one final thing, I don't want to take up all of the time, but there was. I was trying to understand the distribution. Where it sounded like you said that it was limited to the urban, the the district defined, but in. At least one document I read, it showed that all all the properties in our taxing district and our city limits would be.
We talked about three steps. So the first step is calculation and that's limited to the urban renewal area. That's deciding how much money you get. The second step is distribution and that's citywide. So it's put on every tax bill citywide. And then the third is collection. The assessor gets all those funds in and gives them to the agency.
All right, thank you.
Councilor.
In reading the packet, there was an indication that once the the district is up, it has to close. It's met its plan or its timeline. And we've had them, so that raised the question for me, is there a gap period? So you haven't finished your project or or you want to. Continue on how long before you can reestablish an urban renewal area that either overlaps or is is part of that same.
That's a that's a great question, so.
Similar to that train of thought would be, does it have to be contiguous? Does it have to touch?
So. An urban renewal area ends in Oregon when you reach the maximum indebtedness or when you decide to end it. So I've I've had city councils decide to end it before it reaches its maximum indebtedness. Either because it was successful or because it's not going to be successful or. But you can do that as long as you pay off all your debt. It, once you terminate an urban renewal area, I I'm working with another city right now where they've had an area for a long time. They are deciding that they want to terminate that area. They want to restart and. A new area, but they want to incorporate part of that area because all the projects weren't done or there are new projects that need to be done. And you can do that as soon as one area ends. You can put it into another area. The great thing about it ending is all of that increased assessed value goes back to all the different taxing districts. So that the frozen base that starts over again is much higher, so they're getting increased tax revenue. Councilor Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at the page, the hypothetical property tax bill, and you've given us the rate, the property value. And what it would look like with the urban renewal and. Without, what does it look like the next year? So this just kind of says year one. This is year one. So the next year. Would urban renewal continue to grow and everybody else stays at that same numerical value?
Just, yes, for the properties within the area, correct?
Correct. So if Lane County is at four hundred and eighty six dollars a year. For the duration of the thirty years, they'll continue to be at four hundred and eighty six dollars.
That's correct. Let me show you some of the of the. Ideas of what other cities have done real quickly. I put these together thinking of. Your city and the types of things that you can do. So Estacada did a very nice street skate program in their downtown. It wasn't as expensive as some of the other big bigger cities do, but it's very effective and they did find that they had new businesses come in. Directly after their street scape was done. So they just use different types of paving, different types of service surfaces. But not the expensive ones that bigger bigger cities do and it's it's quite nice. Next slide. This is Sister Street Skate. Part of this was paid for with urban renewal, but part was actually a highway ODOT funding. But it does show the type of street skate that can be done in a smaller community. That really ties the community together and gives it an overall coordinated look and. Helps encourage people to invest in their properties because everything looks better. Next slide. Parks and public open spaces are common parts of any downtown urban renewal area. This is the Garden of Surging Waves in Astoria, which is quite nice. Urban renewal bought the property. There was a lot of individual fundraising for that outside of urban renewal, so urban renewal just helped to leverage. Getting that project accomplished. Next slide. This is a street scape program in Florence, so they did banners and the signage, which also. It just helps with creating that main street feel and that. Feel that encourages people to develop and redevelop. Next slide. Sandy has a very effective storefront program, so you've probably seen a lot of Dutch brothers. But you probably haven't seen a Dutch brothers like that. They have a requirement that all buildings within their urban renewal area have this kind of timbered. Mountain look and so any new buildings have to have that and they have a very effective storefront program. Where they go to property owners and encourage them to redo their existing properties in this field. And if you from here, you probably don't go up and through Sandy very much. If you're going over to Bend, you you don't go that way. But Sandy has changed dramatically over the last ten years due to this storefront program. Next slide. This is another one where you just take a plain little box building, but they put some awnings on it and some other decoration. And that timber entryway to make it look more like the mountain architecture and mountain feel. Next slide. And then new development, this is the abandoned face rock creamery. This was a partnership between the urban renewal area and the owner of the face rock creamery. So public restrooms were developed there. The creamery cleans those, maintains them so that the city doesn't have to do that. The creamery cleans those, maintains them so that the city doesn't have to do that. The city helped put in the sidewalks and the parking and that again is maintained by the property owner. Next slide. This is Fort George Brewery up in Astoria. You can see up on the left that it was, and this is when I first started working with Astoria, a vacant, dilapidated, windows broken building that caused a lot of problems in the community. And it now is Fort George Brewery and it's one of the most successful small breweries in Oregon. Now has five or six other little businesses that they have developed right around that area or that node of the city of Astoria. So just starting with that one building created this huge spinoff effect in that part of the downtown. Next slide. I think that, oh, and this is in Coos Bay. It's a new development again done by the owners of Face Rock Creamery, where they worked with the city of Coos Bay to provide improvements down along the waterfront, just to the north of the downtown of Coos Bay. Put in a number of commercial spaces, which I was just there last week in North Bend and all of them are occupied. So a lot of new services for the city of Coos Bay, which is pretty exciting for them. And I think that's all. Next slide. Yep, back to the next steps. Other questions? I know it's a lot of information.
So, so Mayor, if I might, I just wanted to add a couple different things to the presentation. So one of the things that could be considered is, is that the city went through and approved a revitalization plan for downtown Cottage Grove. It's much larger than the effort we're making with the Main Street. We actually had to pare that project down probably by 50% to qualify for the EDA grant. So there is a plan that already talks about a lot of the things that, the pictures and things for making connectivity, improving space, having a bit plaza area, various different things that could be considered in the creation of project, project list. I'd also share that when Mr. Klein was here, he talked about, you know, in Independence, they built a civic center. They also partnered with a hotelier to bring in a downtown hotel. So there's projects there. Then when I was county commissioner, I served on the Springfield Economic Development Agency. And I, I would think most of you are familiar with the Glenwood area, that's where that agency boundary was. And when you talk about flexibility, we had a, a huge, long list of projects that could be done. We originally started trying to acquire pieces of property so that we could build storm drainage structures and various different infrastructure needs to help develop along the river down there by the Royne Rapids pizza area and that. But that was taking a lot of time and as was said, you can't borrow money unless you can serve the, service the debt. So we weren't able to generate revenue then. Williams Bakery needed a new place to, to move to and so the agency, city of Springfield was able to lure them to, to locate in, in the Glenwood area. And then the agency shifted gears and focused on getting the necessary water sewer infrastructure to that piece of property to actually see that investment take place. So there, you know, the agency can have a lot of flexibility and maneuver. But the other thing too, that could take place is a loan program to make that bridge gap funding if the council's comfortable with it, that could help projects actually get to implementation. There's a lot of projects that come before the planning department and, and spend a lot of time, but in the end, they, you know, fall short of being able to get the financing. So this could be a, a help, create a tool that could actually see some of these projects materialize too. So it can be a pretty exciting tool to use and help re-energize and revigorate an area.
Counselor Stenit.
Thank you. What about the long-term plan for the Armory? The North Tower and the commercial kitchen down low, I mean, is it something we could look into?
Mayor Counselor Stenit, that could be, I believe we'd have to check, but I believe that that could be a, a, a project that would, could qualify for urban renewal funds. And yes, right now, the plan is to see, and we are seeking grant funds for projects there. And that's really the majority of the funds that have been generated for the improvements have been through grants. That was one of the things that Mr. Klein said, that with the Armory and the space that's there available for hosting conferences and stuff, now if you could combine it with a downtown hotel within walking distance, that would potentially be a, a real positive thing for getting more people downtown, seeing tourists come to the community and then utilize that Armory space at a higher level.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for your time. Well, we are about four minutes to seven, so we'll just wait to get some more of these folks in.
Hey, we have 7:01. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. While the recorder, please call the roll.
Present.
Counselor Urban.
Here.
Counselor Fleck.
Here.
Counselor Merity.
Here.
Counselor Savage.
Here.
Counselor Stenit.
Here.
Mayor Soulsby.
Here. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with the unity of justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, we have a swearing in of a police officer. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm going, I'm going to introduce Officer Luke Monahan. I'll just say a little bit about Luke really quick. Luke came to us about two years ago, almost two years ago to the day as a dispatcher and he's been working in the South Lane 911 Center. And a few months back, he applied and was successful in becoming a police officer. So he will be leaving next week on Monday or probably Sunday night to head up to Salem, to the Police Academy for 16 weeks. So we're super excited to have him on board. We're sad to see him leave the 911 Center, but we're really excited to get him over on the police side as well. And I know he's chomping at the bit to get out there. So he's been on the radio all the way up until his final shift was, I believe, yesterday, right? Or, yeah, so he's dying to get out there and, and transition into the police role. So I'm going to, I was going to stand up here without the mic and do this. So real quickly, I have one more introduction that I would like to make. Jessica Herrera, I'm going to ask her to step up here really quick. Jessica's our newest dispatcher and she just started today. So she is starting fresh with no experience in public safety or in, in dispatching. She does come to us with a significant background in customer service and food and beverage. So we're super excited to have her here. Again, this is literally her first day on the job, but we wanted to introduce her to all of you as well. So please join me in welcoming Jessica to the team here in Cottage Grove and to the South Lane 911 Center.
Thank you, Chief. Alright, we're moving right into a proclamation. Water Safety Month Proclamation. Whereas Water Safety Month was established through a collaborative effort across the country to promote water safety and drowning prevention. Whereas National Water Safety Month takes place annually each May and is proclaimed as a joint effort of the World Water Park Association, the American Red Cross, the National Recreation and Park Association, the Pool and Hot Tub Alliance, and whereas Citizens of Cottage Grove recognize the role swimming and aquatic related activities play in a good physical and mental health and enhancing the quality of life for all people. Whereas water safety education plays an important role in preventing drownings and recreational water-related injuries. Whereas the Warren H. Doherty Aquatic Center, our community pool, has partnered with South Lane's Early Learning Center to promote water safety, drowning prevention, and provide swim lessons scholarships in the community. And whereas with temperatures on the rise, more people are heading out to enjoy summer activities, many of which include water and swimming. And whereas by becoming informed, each one of us can enjoy a fun and safe summer. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Candace Soulsby, Mayor of the City of Cottage Grove, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize the month of May 2024 as Water Safety Month and call this observance to the attention of its citizens. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Cottage Grove to be affixed this 22nd day of April 2024. Alright. Presentations. We're going to bring Shane back up here. Warren H. Doherty Aquatic Center report, staff report by the city manager, Mr. Sauerlein.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here. You know, I was getting dressed and I usually wear a swimsuit and I was putting my, my jacket was a little tight. I'm like, did it shrink though? Or my pants were a little tight and I can't run anymore. I, I probably should swim a little bit more, don't you think? So that's how I started my day today. It's an honor to be here. Thank you for your time. My background, I'm from Cottage Grove. I swam here a long time ago. I learned all my skills here at South Lane. I became a lifeguard here when I was young, 15. It's been my life work teaching people to swim and eliminate drowning. I mean, it's very important. I also a certified pool operator. I left out, I'm a lifeguard too. And I taught lifeguard, you know, I trained lifeguards for over 25 years. I manage and operate the center. I coached the team. The team's getting better, by the way. And I evaluate all the employees and the programs. I don't do this all by myself. I have a lot of help at the pool. Cause you know, the pool's open from 5:30 in the morning till 8:30 at night. So I don't know if you have the slide after Who Am I? So the slide three. So next one, there you go. So these are all the community programs that we have at the pool. You know, lap swim. Every lap swimmer likes to have their own lane, but yeah, sure, lane once in a while. Mermaids is another exercise group in the therapy pool. And we have two pools at the, we have the therapy pool that we keep ninety, ninety one degrees. And then we have the big, big competitive pool, and that's a big tank of water. Okay? So the pool is open to the community forty seven point seven five hours. Next slide. Those are all the times. I come in in the morning at five on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And I'm there a lot. And then Tuesday, we open up at seven thirty. The team is gonna come in, you know, before seven thirty next season, I'll put it that way. And then we're open on Saturday from eight thirty to twelve. And then we have pool rentals on Saturday and Sunday afternoon, too. How many, next slide, please. How many people from the community use the pool every month? There's the numbers. January, of course, we had the ice storm and February and March were a lot of people in our community use the pool. That's how many people have used the pool this fiscal year with three months to go. And we're ahead of last year already. We still have three more months to go. So that's good news, you know, good news. Next slide. Who use the pool most every month? Well, our seniors usually use the pool the most. In the therapy pool primarily. So in January, you can, you can read the numbers fifty two, fifty five percent. And then in March, forty one percent of user, total, total number of people that use the pool. So our seniors really utilize that therapy pool. So every time someone walks through the door, it costs twenty one dollars and fifty eight cents total cost. That's with everything. That's with chlorinating the water, heating the water, circulating the water, having personnel, lifeguarding, the maintenance on the pool, that's everything. The city currently funds each person that you, person that uses the pool, four dollars and forty nine cents. That's the city's contribution per person. And the school district, our partners, thirteen dollars and eight cents. And the fees charged to the individual at the pool is about four dollars per visit. Without city support, community members would have paid eight forty nine, eight dollars and fifty cents every time they came through the door. So for the next fiscal year, increase in personal costs, you know, wages go up, chemical and other supply costs. Let me give you an example of chlorine. You know, like in two thousand twenty two, you could get a hundred pounds of calcium hypochlorite. That's what we use to sanitize the water. You could get a hundred pounds for about a hundred and eighty bucks. Now you can get sixty pounds for three hundred and sixty five bucks. And then for the acid, which we use for pH control, you know, you could get fifteen gallon carboy, I don't know, sixty bucks. Now they're a hundred and sixty five bucks. So all those, all those chemical costs really went up. Regular maintenance, which we're on a maintenance schedule at the pool, daily, weekly, monthly, semi-annual, annual maintenance, that all takes time and money. And then, you know, anybody that's driven a car knows that sometimes you have to replace stuff. Like put in a new water heater, you know, we heat a lot of water up there sometimes. So yeah, things, things break and we have to fix them. To maintain the current rate for the community members, the city will need to, and I'm asking nicely and kindly, to increase their support by seventeen percent for up to ninety thousand dollars. Okay? So the next slide. At the pool, we do more. You know, like I said, our seniors use the pool a lot, but we hosted fourteen high school swimming competitions as well as the state YMCA mate, YMCA mate, a hundred and sixty five. The pool brings people to Cottage Grove. They go to local businesses and buy food, fuel, and stay overnight. Like I said, a hundred and sixty five swimmers and their families competed in our pool, January twenty seventh and twenty eighth. That was a week after we opened up for the ice storm. And then one time after a meet, I went down to Pinocchio's. There's a couple of teams down there eating. I'm like, hey, can I have a couple pieces of pizza? They're like, no, you gotta buy your own, okay? So all the students in Cottage Grove learn how to swim. I'm very proud of that. I'm really proud of that. The number one water safety rule is to learn how to swim, first and foremost. The second one was always, I would say, I didn't put this in the slide, but always swim in a supervised area, you know, with a lifeguard. That's probably number two. So far this fiscal year, twelve hundred people have learned how to swim in our pool. And then, and the instruction is top notch. Our kids in South Lane and Cottage Grove are learning how to swim properly, and I'm very proud of that as well. Swimming helps behavior in young people. It helps, you know, like when they get in swimming, they go back to class, they're a little more relaxed. Kinda like, and I go on this on the next slide, kinda like when you get out of the shower, that kind of thing. They're clean, they're ready to learn. Swimming gives young people in Cottage Grove an opportunity for recreation fun, enjoy, and enjoyment in a safe environment. If we don't give our young people that opportunity, trust me, they will find other things to do. Sometimes, not always the right thing, not always the right thing, so. Benefits to swimming in the pool, like I mentioned, how do you feel after you swim? I feel great, you know? It's, it feels the same after taking a shower bath. It makes you feel good. It helps you have a positive attitude. Keeps your heart and lungs healthy because it works your entire body. Swimming enhances balance and posture, improves strength and boosts stamina. Swimming releases endorphin, improves sleep patterns, and enhances appetite and coordination. Mental benefits of swimming include improving mood, lowering depression, and a boost yourself esteem. Hey, look how far I swam today. Or, hey, I went to the meet last week and I got better. It helps, it helps you with a positive attitude. There's a lot of opportunity in aquatics. Like I said, I'm from Cottage Grove. And I just love that you can become a lifeguard at age fifteen. And when you have that certification, you can work anywhere. You know, I put later in here, our country is at an all time low for certified trained aquatic people. That's true. So our young people could get their training here, stay here. I would've stayed here. I would've never left if there would've been a really, you know, job, you know, but Bud Taylor was here. So I wasn't getting that job, I'll tell you that, so. Water safety instructor. In the military, which I spent a lot of my time, there's a lot of opportunity in aquatics. You know, when a lot of my friends were going on a mission, I did deployments overseas. They didn't want me to go on mission. They wanted me to be at the pool, training people or having a recreational experience when we're over in places like Djibouti, Africa or Kuwait. You know, they, they said, well, we just want you at the pool. You don't have to go on mission. I go, when am I gonna go on mission? They go, probably never. And so I spent my time at the pool. Being a swim instructor, learn how to teach people how to swim. You can do that for a long, long time, and you can always get a job. I'm a pool operator. The certification allows you to understand how a pool works, pH control, sanitation, filtration, chlorination, all that stuff. That's what, you know, pool operator is. Aquatic management takes a little bit longer, working with people, learning when to say, hey, I think you should do the right thing, or you're doing a good job, that kind of stuff. And our country is at an all time low for certified trained aquatic people. And we're addressing that at Warren H. Doherty. So I feel really great about that, too. So. And that's my presentation. I wish I could talk more, but here we are. So you have any questions for me? I just said, thank you. Nope.
Any questions?
Wow, thank you very, oh. Mr. Merid, Meridah.
Yeah, not a question, just I enjoyed seeing you at the pool when I brought, we brought our life skills class from Lincoln on Friday.
That's right. I was lifeguard, weren't you?
Yeah.
I didn't know that was you.
Yeah.
How the kids like it.
Oh, they love it. They, they live for, for swim days.
How were the kids after they got out of class?
Much, you, you nailed it. They were, they were clean. They were, they were mentally stable. They were happy. They were.
Swimming has that power, Mr. Meridah. It really does. So I'm glad you were there. I didn't know you then, but now I do. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So did you see me up there, lifeguard?
I did. You did a great job. I was even like, oh, I just.
When you grabbed the rope, I thought about blowing my whistle.
Yeah, and we, I jumped off a diving platform. Matthew Ferguson is one of our scouts that lifeguards there.
Well, I think that class is very important to swim. I think it really helps that class a lot. So anyway, thank you.
Welcome home, Shane. Thank you for what you do. All right, well, we're fortunate tonight to have Representative Charlie Conrad. We have a staff report by Mr. Sauerlein.
Good evening and thank you all very much. I appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. And to give a summary of what did we do this last short session? And I did this after the long session last time. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, we weren't able to schedule Cottage Grove. So this is the first time I've been able to come to you and bring a summary report to you guys about what we did. And so happy to answer any questions as we go through. As I go through the report, there'll be a lot of high level topics that I talk about. They're complex. So stop me at any point in time. If you want to get into the weeds, happy to do that. But I try to keep this as informative and useful to you as possible. So happy to go to whatever depth works for you. Just as a reminder, I represent House District Twelve. And House District Twelve goes from the, clearly the Douglas Lane line, so includes Cottage Grove, Crestwell, all the way up just north in the Lynn County, and then up just to the peaks of the Cascade. So in that district, there are eight different cities that I represent. And I've been able to get to most cities to give this presentation. The committees that I sit on, on the House, I sit on the Judiciary Committee, the Behavioral Health Healthcare Committee, Emergency Management Bets and General Government, that's all one committee, and then the Public Safety Ways and Means Committee as well. And in addition to those, I'm on a number of other groups outside of the legislature. I've been appointed to the Juvenile Justice Policy Commission, Juvenile Interstate Compact. I'm also on a Modernizing Grants and Contracts Task Force. And I was fortunate enough this year to be on the Measure One Ten Budget Work Group. So I'll talk about House Bill four thousand two, which is the policy side for the Measure One Ten Fix, the reprimandization. But on the back end of that, we also had a budget bill. And that budget bill, we looked at shovel ready projects to improve and expand capacity for our behavioral health network. The other two groups that I participate on, I'm part of what we call the Water Caucus. And that's a bicameral bipartisan group, and we focus on water. And one of the reasons why we're able to get money for Cottage Grove is being on that, being able to advocate for cities and local communities to help with water and water infrastructure. And some of what we also look at is, you know, the frontier counties, counties on the east side, looking at the agricultural side. So how do we manage water in Oregon and how do we tackle some of those issues at the policy level? The other group similar to that that I'm actively involved in, it's the Veterans Caucus. Again, it's bicameral bipartisan, and we focus on veterans issues. And one of the things our advocacy got was that thirty five million dollars for the veterans housing in Roseburg. And that housing project has been talked about at the legislature for fifteen years. And we've got thirty five million dollars, which is a state contribution. And now we'll hopefully work with the federal and the federal side will come in with their contribution. We actually get that project going. So very happy to be part of those, all those different groups. The short session is thirty five days. And I say short session because in the even years, it's thirty five days. In the long, in the odd years, we have a five and a half month session. So it's a little bit different. And so this short session started beginning of February and it went just into the first week or so of March. And just kind of have a sense of some of the numbers involved. Each legislature, legislator for the short session, we could submit two bills. In the long session, as many bills as we want. And some legislators take advantage of that, and there are some that actually submit over a hundred bills. But everybody was limited to two for the short session. And then each policy committee could submit three policy bills. So it was a very small number of bills compared comparatively. But just for information, we submitted in the House side, a hundred and eighty measures, and of which seventy one passed both houses. And I said measures there because in addition to policy and legislation, we have joint resolutions, we have memorial resolutions, we have other types of things that we pass on the House floor, not all of its policy or legal legislation. And that hundred and eighty compares to, in the long session, we had one thousand seven hundred and fifty eight. And of those, three hundred and sixty passed both houses. And then on the Senate side, this last short session, they had a hundred and eleven measures that they submitted. Again, there are sixty representatives, and then there are thirty senators, so they're half as many. And sixty two of those passed both houses. And for them, that compares to the long session where there are one thousand two hundred and twelve measures that they submitted and two hundred and ninety three of those passed both houses. So you can see that we, the workload was drastically different, but it was drastically different with a compressed timeframe. So the, the pace was about the same. It was just a little bit different. A few high level comments just about the short session. So again, a freshman legislator. So I can compare this to the long session and compare it to, you know, some of the other work that I have done in and around the legislature. And I'll tell you, it was a very bipartisan legislature. Clearly, we had some party line votes. Clearly, we had legislation that no, not both sides didn't like. But overall, we accomplished some really important things, and I'll touch on those here in a little bit. But it was very bipartisan. And that bipartisanship is, is my feeling, but it's also the feeling from a number of the, the veteran legislators and other people in and around the Capitol, lobbyists and the other advocacy groups that are in there quite a bit. So to me, that is important because that keeps Oregon functioning. That keeps us having conversations at the legislature that really focus on legislation and to get people at the table. One of the last things that we did, former Speaker Ray Field stepped down because he's running for Attorney General. And we voted in now Speaker Julie Fahey. And that is exciting. Julie Fahey represents Western Eugene and Veneta. The Speaker of the House is one of three elected positions in the state that has veto authority. Nothing passes the House, nothing happens in the House without the Speaker's tacit authority. Same thing in the Senate side with the Senate President, and then, of course, the Governor. So the fact that we've got a local Lane County legislator that's experienced, that knows rural communities, knows small cities, as one of the most powerful elected positions in the state, that's incredibly important for us. And I, I personally like Representative Fahey. She and I get along well. Clearly, we don't agree on all the policy issues, but to have somebody like that, that's willing to open and willing to listen and to understand for local and rural communities is very valuable. And I'll tell you that one of the things that she did, which shows how, I think, shows how she's going to approach her job as a speaker, is she met with our, as a Republican, we're in the minority, with our minority leader, Jeff Helfrich. And she agreed to let the minority leader have a say on what committees the caucus is on, what committees we have. Never happened. So the simple fact that one of the first things she did is something that has never happened is to allow a minority leader to have a say in which member sit on what committees is huge. And again, that's why I'm very hopeful and very optimistic as we go forward in Oregon that we're gonna have a legislature that can sit down and have some of these difficult conversations. Because we have difficult conversations. We're gonna have a lot more of them. We've got a number of challenges, but the fact that we can talk about it and hopefully get to that solution where everybody is at the table and able to represent their districts and represent the voices and advocate for their constituents, to me, that's valuable. And I'm always hopeful and always optimistic that that's gonna be the case. So just a little bit of my optimism regarding that. Some of the other things that we did, you know, we, we passed a lot of bills, we passed a lot of policies. We put a lot of things out, that we put a lot of things on our state agencies. But we also passed some budget bills. And some of the budget bills that we passed had some really important programs that got left out of the long session. And some of them are very important, summer school programs. They didn't get funded in the long session. We got some funding for some summer programs. Not all the summer programs throughout the state are gonna be funded, but a, a large portion of them will be. So very excited we did that. The other thing which is important to me, another group that I strongly advocate for are relief nurseries. They didn't get fully funded in the long session, but this session, we got two point seven million dollars for relief nurseries throughout the state. So now, now they're fully funded. So they didn't take a budget cut. The other thing that we got funding for are child advocacy centers. And the other one, again, it's Internet Crimes Against Children. So Department of Justice runs that Internet Crimes Against Children program. We got some more funding for them so they can hire more staff, because unfortunately, they are incredibly busy. There's a lot of work at that agency and that program. And we got them more money. And so the ability to be able to do that and to be able to backfill some of these really vital programs for our communities, very proud that we were able to do some of that. So I'll stop there. Real quick, any, any questions, anything you want me to elaborate on before I go on, start talking about more bills? So I'll stop there. Real quick, any, any questions, anything you want me to elaborate on before I go on? Start talking about more bills. I promise I do have House Bill numbers and Senate Bill numbers here. I am light on them. I give them so that people can look them up if they're interested. But I try to go easy on, on some of the bill numbers, because there are a lot. And I promise I don't talk about all 180 measures that we had. So again, we could submit two bills. The two bills I submitted, the first one is House Bill 4043. And this was the bill, I ran the similar bill in the long session, and it failed in Ways and Means. And what this does is it tightens up our animal abuse regulations. And what I did this time is I took out everything that had sent it to Ways and Means, all the funding side. I had a grant program in there for 4H and FFA. I took that out. I'll look for another way to get some money to those programs. But it was signed by the Governor on March 27th. So I was very happy that I got that bill signed. And the other one, this is one of those incredibly complex and fun topics, is House Bill 4056. This was signed by the Governor on April 4th, and this is property tax foreclosure. So before I get a drink of water, just get your mind thinking about property tax foreclosure. If you're aware of a Supreme Court case, Tyler versus Hennepin. Tyler's a person in Hennepin, Hennepin County in Minnesota. The Supreme Court ruled that counties, when they foreclose on a tax property, once they dispose of the property and they take all of their legally required fees and payments and everything that they can take back, if there is a surplus, counties were keeping that. The Supreme Court said, you can't do that. That's a takings. You cannot take money that more than what is due to you. So this bill, Association of Oregon Counties asked me to run a bill for them, so that it brings the state in compliance with that case. And I worked on this with a number of advocacy groups. It didn't quite get to where I wanted it to get, particularly with the short timeframe and talking about such a complex topic. Because as soon as you start trying to talk about and ensuring that property owners, their rights are retained. As soon as we talk, talking about lien holders, ensuring that lien holders, that the value in their liens are retained. When we talk about the burden to counties and for them to be able to actually manage all of this, because to develop a process and procedures that county can't, counties can't manage, does nothing. It's broken. So we've got to get something that they can actually balance and manage. And this is important for cities as well, because cities get this, you know, and cities sometimes, you know, they have fees, they have certain things outside of property taxes that they want to be able to access. And so we need to be sure that we have a nice process that all local governments, all fees and fines, everything is due to them, but that we don't infringe on the property rights of the owner and that surplus. Basically, counties were taking their equity in their property, and we can't do that anymore. So the end result of this, fortunately, I always give credit where credit is due. So this bill went before the Revenue Committee and Representative Nathanson out of North Eugene chairs that. So I worked with her quite a bit. And we got it to a point that we could actually pass something, because there's some opposition to some of the things I was trying to do with the bill. Some of it was just because of that short timeframe, we couldn't have the conversations we needed. And so where we're at now is there are a few things. One is that the Department of Revenue is and has brought together a group, and myself and Representative Emerson Levy from Sisters area are chairing that group. And we're going to work through some of these issues that we couldn't negotiate in that 35-day session. The other thing that we're doing is counties have stopped, once the bill becomes effective. Counties will stop the foreclosure process. So the process will continue, but that period of transferring a deed from a property to the county will not happen. So this property tax foreclosure is a six-year process. Happy to get into the details if you want. It's six years, and then the county takes the property. As soon as the county takes the deed for the property, all liens are extinguished right now. So they're going to stop that process. That way, all liens are currently going to be preserved. Except for, there's one ORS that allows counties to take properties that are abandoned, neglected, or have waste. They will still take those properties, because I think it's vitally important that cities and local governments have the ability to deal with nuisance properties. So those are the only instances that they're going to take over those properties. So anything further on property tax foreclosure? All right. The other, other thing that we do a lot is capital projects and get funding for capital projects to help out our districts, to bring in funds to help out rural districts, cities, agencies, groups that need some funding, that may not be able to come up with it themselves and/or need a little bit of extra, right? The state likes to be the last money in if possible, and they like to help out groups and agencies and cities that already have some other funding coming in. The capital project, capital funding process, it is competitive. So again, 60 representatives, 30 senators, we all want money for our districts. We all have projects that we want. We all have people coming to us with some need. So it is a competitive process. In a town hall that we did about a month ago, Speaker Fahey said she did the math, and the amount of requests was 10 times greater than the amount of money. So when it's competitive, it's competitive. And a lot of people, a lot of districts, a lot of groups were told no this session. And some of that's a short session, and a lot of that money depends on how much we have. It depends on what the issues are. Again, I think we're all aware of the housing issues and, and the messaging coming from Governor Kotek and some of what her priorities are. So funding goes to that. In the long session, we had the public defenders crisis. So we got a lot of money going to the public defenders to help try to alleviate some of that crisis. So every session is going to be a little bit different depending on what the priorities are. And the amounts are going to depend on what the economic forecast is for the state at that point in time. So there's some variability in that. As a regional delegation, we come together and we talk about our projects. So I collect a list from every, all the projects in House District 12, all the other representatives collect requests as well. And we come together because we don't want to compete against each other, and we want to support each other wherever we can. And so if there is a good project that supports the region, we'll all get behind each other and support that project, because we don't want to compete. We want to support each other. Because we do look at Lynn County as a region. We take pride in being a Lynn County delegation. The focus this session, we had a couple focuses. One, as I mentioned before, shovel-ready projects for Behavioral Health. And again, that was, went along with House Bill 4002. We had housing and housing-related housing tangent projects was where money was going, and then also for city and community infrastructure. Those were the big buckets that we had. And for this district, we was able to get money for a number of different projects through all those various things. Able to get $900,000 to upgrade the Bear Mountain Communications Tower. That $900,000 also buys 100 emergency radios. That's the state share. And then Lane County was also able to get the rest of the funds coming from the federal side as well. So federal and state monies are going to go to upgrade Bear Mountain. Junction City was able to get $1 million for them for one of their projects, is Alderdale Well Project. So they're getting $1 million as well. Crestwell, you guys probably followed the news as tightly as I did a few weeks ago, advocating for them. Their $1 million for the water treatment plant got signed by the Governor. That was on that list of seven projects that was potentially going to get vetoed. But the fact that she didn't veto, and they're getting, getting their funds as well, it's very exciting for them. And again, for here, $3 million going to Cottage Grove to help with the infrastructure and the housing project. So excited that we, that $3 million came in. $3 million for, for this particular bill. The committee chair for that, the chair for that committee capped it at $3 million. So nobody in that bill got, got more than $3 million. Cottage Grove requested four and a half, but that's why it was capped at $3 million, to be able to spread the money out a little bit throughout the entire state. And then the other money that was able to get into the district is $4 million going to Lamont Family Treatment Center. Another building, a medical detox and residential facility. So again, that was part of the 4002 and the funding on that backside. So there were also a number of projects just to kind of give you a sense of some of the things that didn't get funded. And it's not that the projects weren't valuable, but sometimes it is opportunity of, and how far along the project is. And again, is there other funding? If the state's the last money in, chances are a little bit higher than if the state is the first money in. And one of the projects that I advocated for personally, that I thought certainly going to get funded, $600,000 to Westford. They would need a new city hall and fire station. Their city hall, I think, was built in 1961. And I thought for that amount of money, and for Westford, who I don't think has ever received any money from the state, I thought we'd be able to get that, and that didn't happen. So I'll still be working with Westford to try and get them some money for some of their projects. Junction City, they had another well project that didn't get funded. Coburg had a water tank project that didn't get funded. Blue River, they still are trying to work on their wastewater, even after the fire and the recovery, because they're on the McKenzie, and the McKenzie has a higher standard. And there's a lot of surface water that connects directly to the river. They've got some different things they've got to do. So the original money that they got a few years ago is not sufficient. And this project just quite wasn't there. There is a window of opportunity that it might have happened, but that window closed pretty quick, unfortunately. And then Row River Fire Response requested money for a fire station. And then, you know, they received some money, as I will get them some money last session. So there might be some of that. The state usually doesn't give money twice in a row to some of the same entities, particularly if they're nonprofits. And probably because they're not on the, not on the ballot yet. So had it actually been a district voted in, it might have been a little bit different for them. So those are just some of the projects. Usually, for me, I get 15 to 20 different capital projects that we sort through. And sometimes frankly, I get asked, okay, pick one. Which one do you want to get funded? And so there really is a criteria that I go through to try and advocate for some of the communities that can't afford it. Some of those communities that have lower resources and would just never happen for them. That's one of the key and important things to, how can we really help those? So any questions on capital projects or the capital projects process? Absolutely.
So thank you. Thank you. A couple of thoughts come to mind. You know, I'm trying to get an idea of priorities, and I'm guessing they change, as you were mentioning, from year to year. You know, the street infrastructure here is, is an issue. So just for our adification, you know, we've had a number of discussions, had a committee with citizen members and everything come together. And there's some options on the table that I think come to basically the state level to draw out special districts for that. How would you advise us to be most effective as a council and as a community to, to advocate at the state level? And then another one, another council member, and I've been working a long time, there's like a skate park bill and something that could be thought of under economic development, bringing overnight stays, potentially something that could sustain bigger events. I wonder where, where do you see those kinds of things line up when you're going through issuance of money? Is that at all getting prioritized? How does something like that get, you know, where does that fall?
Yeah, absolutely. So there are, the capital projects are a number of different things. So there are buckets of money. So when we had housing, when we've got water infrastructure related to housing. So there are larger chunks of money dedicated to those. So any of the projects that you're talking about that can tie into that, absolutely. So I'm also on the Public Safety Ways and Means. So we look at all things public safety, including emergency management. So anything that you can tie into emergency management. So if you can tie in housing, transportation, emergency management, water infrastructure, all of those kinds of things, the more things that I can go and sell it, because I actually, I have to go sell it. I go to the committee folks, I go to the committee chairs, I go to all, anybody that would listen, I go to other legislators and get them to sign on and advocate as well. And they're doing the same thing to me. Again, a coalition of folks going for a project is much more powerful than just one voice. So the more things I can tie into it, it is easier and better, because those are the more people that I can actually go to and talk to because they're interested. Some people are interested just because of the committees that they're on, on the emergency management side. Some people are interested on the housing side. Okay, how do we tie those together? The last long session, I was able to get money for Lowell for their water treatment plant. I tied it to a infrastructure, small community, rural community needs money. If it fails, then you're going to have an environmental disaster in Dexter Lake. They also have tourism, because they host Pac-12 rowing championships. And I tied it into emergency management, because Lowell, that 58 corridor, it's always either under threat of a fire and some sort of evacuation order, or they're hosting a fire camp. So if they lose water, how are they going to be part of that emergency management process that's key to that corridor? So those are all the things that I try to integrate into that to get some of these projects funded. The other side for like a skate park, you know, it's probably not going to meet too many of those things. So that would be more of a one-off project. We call it the Christmas tree bill. And that's where I would advocate for, here's what we need, because it's economic development, it's tied to whatever else we can tie it to that makes sense, and that's selling. And some of it depends also on what it's competing against. So if there are other skate parks, if one gets funded, which one is that throughout the state? If in the bills that we had this session, there were, a number went to small theaters for some of the arts. So there's always a little bit of money for the arts. But skate parks and kids and all those kinds of things, those are always beneficial. And if you go in again with braided funding, right? If you go in and say, the city's voting in this, we've done fundraising, we've got community members doing this, we have individuals doing this, we have nonprofits doing this, and we just need another $500,000 from the state, and then we're good, and here's all the wonderful things we can do with it. That makes it a much easier selling point for me, and it resonates with people, because people aren't against it, but it's all those other needs in there. Yeah, the other, the other thing I'll throw in there, it's got to be at a certain stage. It's got to be advanced enough. So in December, the projects come in, evaluate them. My staff works with all the people that have put in to get them to a point, right? Because if you're, if you're not going to use that money within that biennium or quickly, you're not going to get it. It's going to go to somebody that can use it now. And so whether it means that you just got a 30% diagram done, whether it means you've got, you know, whatever other planning you've got, whatever, however far you can advance it, then you're good to go. And it makes it a lot easier to sell it. Right here, right now, $500,000, we can build this, it'll be done in six months. That's, that's a much easier sell.
Counselor Savage. Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you so much for coming this evening. It's always a pleasure to see you. Watching you grow in your freshman term has been absolutely outstanding. I remember in February of 2023, when we did Capital Dirt, Capital Day in Salem for the LOC, right before you guys started the long session, we got to go meet with folks. We get to make meetings, and, and we generally got about five or 10, sometimes 15 minutes. You invited us into your office and sat down, and, and we talked for half an hour. And it was absolutely amazing how accessible you have always been and continue to be. I mean, my gosh, I think that we got a call, I think Mr. Stewart put the plea out mid-January and said, hey, if anybody knows any of our representatives, please give them a call. I want to have a meeting. I gave you a call 20 minutes after we left that meeting, and you were right there. Hey, yeah, let's have a meeting. We had it booked within a week. Well, then we had an ice storm. But the moment the ice storm cleared up, you were here in person and gave us another hour. I'm just blown away that I see you everywhere, doing all the things, and really appreciate the $3 million that you helped us get. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I'll tell you that, you know, I said that I advocate, and I do advocate, but I advocate on the back of the work that all the staff do. I advocate off all the work that you guys do. So it's not just a me thing. It really is, you guys make it easy on me to be able to go advocate when you have a good project that ties into the funds, and it's advanced enough that it's easy sell. That's helpful. And again, that's, that is part of really why, one of the reasons why I enjoy working in this district and representing the district, is be able to work with people who are actually engaged, and we can go do this together. So I thank you for that, and I thank you guys for all your work. And Mr. Stewart, thank you for all your work, everything you did to get that together. So ready for me to continue? Okay, thank you. All right. So now some bills and some bill numbers. Here are some of the key things that we touched on. The first one, House Bill 4002. I think this was one of the big things that we all knew going into the session. And House Bill 4002 is recriminalization of small amounts of drugs. And it's the Measure 110 Fix, if you want to term it that way. And going into the session, we knew what it was going to be. There was a joint committee that was put together that held hearings beginning about September to talk to various stakeholder groups, various people about it. I was able to present with Representative from Portland, she's a pediatrician, and Representative Reynolds. And we were able to present, talk about youth, and to ensure that youth were going to be included in whatever came out of 4002, when we were able to be successful in that. So with 4002, the conversations, again, there were a bunch of different ideas along the spectrum of how we're going to solve this. And overhanging this, if you remember, there are a couple of citizens initiative petitions that were overhanging, that people had funding ready to go, that were going to set the stage, that this probably was, there was a high likelihood that there was going to be, one of those was going to pass in some way, shape, or form. And the initial conversation started off with a C misdemeanor. Remember, there was a contingent of folks that don't want to recriminalize drugs at all. The initial conversations were C misdemeanor. And C misdemeanors are the lowest level of crime that you can have. There's not much impetus for a police officer to stop somebody for C misdemeanor. You know, I think it's, if I remember right, to correct me, it's like 30 days maximum prison. There's minimal fines. It doesn't do much. The term of art that we use is governmental interest. And so as a police officer, if I'm going to go stop somebody for a C misdemeanor and risk a use of force incident, a resisting arrest, something that's going to be an A misdemeanor or something higher, why am I going to instigate something that doesn't need to be and make it worse? That doesn't make sense from the government side of things to do it. The folks in my caucus, we all agree. The folks in my caucus, we all agreed and we held firm, we all wanted A misdemeanors. We wanted that governmental interest. We wanted people to be held accountable, but fully understanding that jail doesn't work for any, everybody when it comes to treatment. We, I think I know that from my experiences. The way that I view it is that this is another door to open up. We need so many doors to open up to help people get into treatment, mental health treatment, behavioral health treatment. But we have to have that backend capacity as well. So we all held firm on the A misdemeanor. The conversation gravitated and we ended up with what is called a U misdemeanor, it's unclassified crime. They've been out there for a long time. When I was in Springfield, we had most of our city codes were unclassified misdemeanors. And what came out of that is maximum of one hundred and eighty days in jail. So it's similar to an A misdemeanor, A misdemeanor is three hundred and sixty four days in jail maximum. And then there are ninety days of sanction units. So if somebody is convicted, they can buy and they violate their probation, they can go back and set up to ninety days in a jail cell. So those are the the conditions. So that is very, very different than what the original conversation was with the C misdemeanor. The other things that came out of it, the first one is deflection. And deflection is a voluntary-ish program that still is going to be developed. A lot of this because it's new, new statewide, it's going to still have to be developed. It's going to have to come from Land County, the DA's, the sheriff's office, everybody in the jail to work through. But think of it as basically a pre-conviction due re diversion, because that's what it is. It's pre, you're not convicted of anything and you have the opportunity to go to treatment, complete treatment, and then things go away. So that's how you think of that. If somebody chooses not to go to that. Or they fail out of that, then the next stage, it is, I just lost the phrase, conditional discharge. And that's where the district attorneys first step in at that phase. And they've got a little bit of authority to more compel people to go to treatment, to get them into the help that they need. If they fail out of that, then the next stage is that should go stand before a judge and face conviction for their crimes. So that's the process. It's still going to be under development from the county. It's not exactly what I wanted from the outset. But my approach and my view on it is this is what we've got and we need to do everything we can to absolutely make it work. Because if it does work, great, it actually worked. If it doesn't work, great, we know why it didn't work and we can go back and we can revamp it and revise it. There are some models that have worked. Marion County has a very similar program, they have been very successful. And this is some of what was, again, we're in Salem, so it's easy to talk about Marion County. This is some of what was templated after. Washington State also has something similar as well. So we use some of that template as well to come up with the deflection, conditional discharge, and then finally the court and the conviction side of things. So that's four thousand two. Anything on four thousand two?
Thank you. Is treatment defined in the in this revision of what that means?
I think it is, but I can't guarantee what, I'm pretty sure it is, but I can't recite it. The next one, the other bill that is very important, obviously throughout the state is Senate Bill fifteen thirty seven. This is the housing bill. And so we had a funding package for the housing fifteen thirty, but this is the housing side. And I won't go through all of it, it's an omnibus, there are a number of different sections in there. The sections that I talk about most, because there's a revolving loan program. I think it's something similar to the Urban Renewal District. I think it's more of a tax and green financing aspect to it. There's also the ability for. Developers to postpone paying their SDCs to the backend of it, so they don't have the upfront cost. So the whole idea is to encourage and incentivize production and to eliminate those barriers. The one part of this is the Housing Accountability and Production Office, HAPO, is the new agency that was set up as part of this. And they have a number of different things in their purview. One of them, it's grants. And it's working with cities to help eliminate and alleviate some of the administrative burden that are put on developers. Those are good things, in my opinion. I'm happy I support those. The one thing that they also have, it's a little bit of a regulatory aspect. That the one thing that I'm concerned about is I don't want this to be another Luba. I don't want this to be a Luba light. I don't want this to be something, another administrative appeals agency before it actually goes to Luba. So that's that's the part, again, I'm going with, it's going to work, we're going to do everything we can to make it work, going to watch it. And if it doesn't, how do we revamp and revise it? Because this is a brand new agency and so undoubtedly, there are going to be some tweaks and some changes to that. So with fifteen thirty seven. You know, it. The policy, I think, is good, got to increase that production side of things. Now it's getting down to operationalizing it and did we do it in the right ways and are these the right things to do going forward? And is this actually helpful to cities and communities? Does this actually benefit the city of Cottage Grove, its constituents, its developers, everything that you are trying to do and can do? Is this helpful or is this going to be another another burden or another hoop that you have to jump through? I hope it's not another hoop. I hope it's beneficial, hopefully there are other resources there for you.
So is this also the bill that created the one time annexation exemption where I think thirty percent had to be affordable housing? I don't remember all the details and I haven't heard from our staff of whether that's a tool for us. But this is one of my big gripes for years is the annexation process, in particular, partially constrained properties. Our current building needs analysis, I think, is thirty seven or thirty nine percent of our available land is partially constrained. This is an expensive process where you have to hire consultants just to find out that, oh, wait, we can't increase our urban growth boundary because we have all this property. That could be a half acre lot with a house right in the middle that has zero chance of development. And so it's taken off of our opportunity to expand our UGV. I'm not saying let's throw out Senate Bill one hundred, but there's going to have to be some compromises. I know we've seen some with the semiconductor thing, I think that was last legislative session. I do think we just, like I said, I don't want to see urban sprawl, but at the same time, part of our housing problem is because we have been so restrictive. You know, with development that it's really hurt us in the long run. So I guess what I'd love to see is that we're working towards those compromises to allow us to expand our UGVs, to be able to, you know, build the houses that we need so desperately.
Yeah, I agree, appreciate you bringing that up. Some of the acreage that cities are allowed to bring in, it reduced. It was not originally what the governor had asked, I think it ended up being reduced by half, depending on what's needed. So again, for my district, balancing the city's needs, whatever the growth needs are, the development needs, the economic needs. But also I represent agriculture, I represent farmers. I want to ensure that we protect our farmlands and our agricultural sector and that we protect those high quality soils that we have. I don't want to see them go away. And it's going to take that balance over time and consistent and thoughtful approach. So how and when and where are we going to expand? The other thing is those impacts. So if you have that buffer zone between a new development area, new homes, and you have a farmer that's close with, you know, if they're plowing, if they're raising dirt and dust. There are times when farming is dirty, there are times when farming and ranching creates smells. That's going to be something that we're going to have to balance with, what is that right buffer zone? And what does that do to the ability to develop those lands? So those are ongoing conversations, they will be ongoing conversations, particularly for me in my caucus. We talk about those quite a bit because I have a number of agricultural folks that I talk to that are impacted by that. The next one, another one that's really important, cities, I saw the signs out there for Cottage Grove Parks. This is Senate Bill fifteen seventy six. This is where we temporarily fix recreational immunity. And for those that don't know recreational immunity, it's the ability for and protects recreation providers from being sued for basically small minor injuries if you don't charge a fee. Or at least a nominal parking fee is what you can charge for some of the parks and recreation areas. So there was a court case in Newport where somebody slipped on a bridge, I think she broke her ankle. And the judge decided that she was not recreating by walking from the beach and that his decision basically upturned recreational immunity. The advice that came out of city county insurance and most insurance companies that represent cities and local governments is close. No parks, no recreation, you can't afford that liability hanging over your head of what that's going to mean. So we were able to fix it, but it was only a one term fix. So we're going to have to be talking about this in twenty five. I've got a background at Land County Parks, recreational immunity is vital. It is vital to our our way of life in Oregon, how important recreation is. You know, as we were talking about this bill and when I spoke about it on the floor, I reached out to one of our large timber landowners in the district. And they were, if this bill did not pass, they were going to close their lands to hunting and fishing. How would that be for Oregon and Oregonians if we couldn't hunt and fish on some of our large private lands? Everybody benefits from that. So this is one, and the next long session, pay attention to it. And for advocacy, advocate, you know, letters from the council, keep talking to me, you know, I'm going to be an advocacy voice, anybody else, constituents, everybody that's involved. Private landowners, everybody, this is one that we have to raise our voice. But I'll tell you, and I'll be blunt, my apologies to any members of the Oregon Trial Lawyers Association, but that's who we're battling. That's who we need to go against and battle is the Oregon Trial Lawyers Association to get this back to where it needs to get. And to not have it be so that it's incredibly litigious and threatens the liability and the recreation of all of our providers throughout the state. So. All right, next one. Next one is Senate Bill fifteen ninety six, this is the right to repair bill. So this is one that I supported. Apple was the only large corporation that came in and opposed it. And there were three things that they opposed related to parts pairing. One of them is like throttling. So the question is, there are seven parts on an Apple iPhone that needs to be paired with your phone, your unique identifier, and needs to be an Apple part. If it's not, you know, then this bill prevents Apple from throttling it down to reduce the efficiency of your phone. Apple came forward and said, we don't want parts pairing. All the other states gave into Apple, California included, and said, okay, we'll pass the bill. So they passed watered down bills. So in one of the the testimony before the Senate, Senator Golden asked a series of great questions. The Apple asked the Apple representative point blank, do you do this? No, do you do this? No, and do you do this? No. Apple said they don't do anything, but yet that's why they were opposed. So we went forward, we passed the bill. And if you remember about a week later is when the federal government sued Apple for their monopolistic behavior. So this passed, my hope is that folks that want to open technology shops, that want to do the repairs, this makes it a little bit easier for them. Folks that are inventors, I mean, if you can improve phones, if you can improve the touchscreen, if you can do those types of things, great. So is this an economic opportunity for someone that's going to eliminate some of those barriers so people can pursue and open their own business? I hope so. And I think for some folks, it actually will be a good thing. So. The next one that I'll talk about is House Bill forty one thirty six, this is Representative Nathanson's bill. And this was the bill that she put forward to address the University District Hospital closure in Eugene. And she held a number of work groups that I was involved with, as well as a number of other folks, another of the groups representing that. She came through, again, there are a number of different elements in this bill. One of them, it is, you know, a million dollars going to Springfield, Eugene Springfield Fire for an ambulance crew. They're furnishing the ambulance, but we're paying for the crew for a year because the simple drive time, now that both hospitals are in Springfield, adds twenty minutes to their commute time. They have one less ambulance that's available simply for commute time. So this is a way to backfill and ensure that we've got ambulances out there on the street and doing what they need to do and the medical providers. The other thing that I talk about that I'm very excited about, it is there's money in there for an innovation fund. And what this innovation fund is, as we all went through the ice storm. It is a way to look at how can we be more creative and do a better job delivering healthcare to people who need it? And some of the things that we talked about, more along the lines of a telehealth. So if somebody were to call nine one one, the nine one one operator says, you know, it's really not an ER level emergency or an emergency where we need to send an ambulance out. And they have the ability to send them to a nurse line in that there's a nurse online that can actually help them through whatever their medical needs are going to be. I look at this from the emergency management perspective, this would be amazing if all of our local clinics are closed because of the ice. They have no power, staff can't get there, people still need medical care. If we have an out of area nurse that we can contact, again, assuming phones are working. Then we can at least get some of the medical care because one of the the outcomes of the ice storm was that everybody that had slip and fall accidents. As soon as the ice melted, they went up to the hospital, they went to the ER room. They weren't all ER room acuity level visits, but there was such a backlog of people just trying to get into the ER because a lot of our clinics still were without power. And weren't able to be treated. So how can we do a better job? Some of the thing, other things that have been talked about, instead of an ambulance picking somebody up again. That is not an acute, high acuity level ER necessary injury or healthcare need and taking them to the ER. Why don't we try to bring a provider to them? Is there a way that we can eliminate some of these wait times at the ER room at the hospital? We hear a lot from the fire department paramedics about it's called wall time. How long is an ambulance just sitting there waiting to get in a patient admitted into the hospital? So this is another way that we can try to do that. So that's why I'm very excited about that. The next bill I'll talk about real quick, House Bill forty one fifty six. One of the benefits that we have of Representative Mannix, after he served for a decade in the nineties in the House and then ran for governor. Is that he's got a lot of legislative history, he knows a lot of good things. And one of the things that he passed in the nineties was the original stocking order. We upgraded it, we modernized it this time around. And so we included all the technologies that didn't exist in the nineties, so air tags, all these other kinds of things that stalkers use to pursue and terrorize their victims. Now fall under stalking. And so now law enforcement has something different that they can do to actually hold people accountable. The last bill that I'll talk about that we passed, it's House Bill four zero two four. And this is the first time in forty nine years that Oregon has campaign finance laws now. And again, we had a citizens initiative petition that was out there or could have been out there potentially. And it forced everybody to come to the table and they actually passed this. So this bill is phased in and it's phased in until twenty twenty seven is when it becomes fully effective. So there are a number of different things that happen in that timeframe. But now there are campaign finance limits and you can give what and how much. And there are some formulas and different things in there from different types of organizations. So again, those were all big things that we were able to pass this session, again, in a short session to be able to do that. The one bill that I'll talk about that we didn't pass, that is so important. And I I hear about it now when I talk to folks. I've talked to a couple of people that have been directly impacted by Optum buying Oregon Medical Group. The corporatization, the mergers and acquisitions going on in the healthcare sector is impacting people on a regular basis, impacting their people, their ability to stay with their primary care. Impacting their ability to get insurance, impacting their health. And this is one of the things that House Bill forty one thirty from Rep Bowman and Tiger put forward is to correct that. And it is, because it deals with private equity, there's, it's a pretty complex and technical bill. But in short, one of the things he was looking at was trying to ensure that fifty one percent of medical providers is actually owned by a licensed medical provider. So that doctors are still in charge of your healthcare. Up to forty nine percent could still be private equity. So trying to ensure that, there are some concerns with that. The first one is, is forty nine percent enough to get private equity still to stay in the healthcare market? We need them, we need private equity to come in. Is that enough incentive if they can't control it? The other thing is what to do with existing businesses, existing practices, corporations that are out there. What ability do we have the state to say, you've been organized this way for the last couple of decades, now you got to change? Those are some things that we still have to hammer out and work out. So this passed the House, I was, I voted against it for those reasons. It died on the Senate floor, Representative Bowman's working on it. I think we've got our first meeting this week. And so it's going to come back and it is vitally important that we get this right the first time. This is an incredibly complex topic and it impacts everybody's healthcare and it impacts your providers as well. This is not a bill that we can come back in two years or the next year and go, yeah, let's tweak it, let's do some different things. This is something we've got to get right the first time. And so the ability to get it right the first time for this complex topic, so that's going to be coming back. So any questions on that at all? Okay, the last, last thing, I'm almost done. Transportation session is going to be twenty five, we're going to talk all things transportation. And so, you know, listening to the urban renewal and the conversations about pavement, one of the things getting going forward is if we can tie into urban renewal dollars to be able to get the pavement condition better. If there's a nexus that we can make there and advocate for that, I'd love to be able to do that, I'd love to put that project forward and go forward with that. Some of the other transportation projects that looking at in the district, Coburg I five interchange, you know, they've got now the the property on the east side of I five. That's going to be a long, long process, but hopefully we can at least get some funding, get some process moving there for Coburg. Crestwell, you know, their jog, they're trying to get some things done for their downtown as well. So if there's some way that we can tag into that project and get some funding for them. And then Oak Ridge, they want to be able to have some ADA accessible and better improvement along fifty eight through Oak Ridge. So those are all the transportation projects and things that I've got, I'm still collecting, still talking, still listening. And hopefully we can get projects to that state come December that we can advocate for them and actually get some money coming back into the city again. So that's all I have, I'm happy for any questions.
Counselor Flack.
So transportation wise, you know, gas tax is really just a dying animal. You know, as vehicles become more few efficient, as electric vehicles come on, we're just not getting the revenue we used to. And so there needs to be a better way to, I I know there were studies way back when about using like GPSs, but then the privacy concerns came up, which I totally get and agree with. But there's got to be a better way for us to assess, you know, fees on vehicles for the miles driven and I, are there? I, are there any committees or or groups working on that? Cause like I said, without some sort of fix, our roads are just gonna, you know, fall apart. Uh, whether it's at the city or, you know, ODOT facilities, I mean, they have huge problems in their budget. Um, you know, I'm on the lean area commission on transportation and our next step is just really ugly looking. Um, you know, so there's not a lot of money in that. So what, what is in the works, uh, for trying to fix that, that hole?
The, the biggest conversation dealing with that, at least the folks that I talked to, there's not a much interest in raising the gas tax. Um, there's not any interest, at least the folks that I talked to, in charging our truckers more. The conversation, a lot of it for raising new fees. Centralizes around electric vehicles, not paying their fair share of the wear and tear on the roads. And so that's what the formula and that's what we're going to figure out. I mean, it goes back to how you're going to track it. How are you going to know? What does that look like? That's going to be the biggest conversation. There are folks talking about that, trying to figure out where to go from there. Um, you know, the other, other things out there, you know, Portland's talked about tolling. For some of their areas, that doesn't necessarily impact us down here as much as the impact, the Portland area. But Portlanders, you know, by and large, don't want to pay for tolling. They don't want to toll in order to pay for the I five bridge. Um, so there are, so again, very hard conversations that we're going to have because we're going to need funds for it. You're absolutely right. And some of that's going to be looking at, at ODOT and looking at their priorities and what they're spending and are they spending on the right ways and are they doing it? You know, the, the graffiti and cleaning up homeless camps and all those other kind of things that are so expensive. There's a lot to look at. So.
Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. One thought on the transportation side mechanism, it's my general understanding that. These were pretty well funded through timber dollars into the eighties. Um, have there been any discussions about, uh, rehashing those kind of conversations and either reversing. Uh, the impact of that or applying it to different industry, uh, to to garner funds, uh, similar fashion. I, I know we're uniquely. You know, geographically blessed here with, with timber, uh, which is a differentiator. I don't know that we have the rest of it, the coast. Line that, you know, nobody else has, but, um, that's one, one question. On the other, it kind of gets to available lands, it certainly could tie into urban growth boundary, but. You know, the number of, uh, properties that are, you know, forest F one, F two. That, you know, the number of times I hear people are really interested in buying and, and, and developing, but there's just no mechanism. The land use goals. Uh, seem to be, uh, what's, was prohibited to, to, what's interest. So I, I wonder. Uh, are there discussions, are there committees, you know, some of the question that are addressing land use goals as it relates to affordability? That, you know, increased populations, uh, demand for housing.
So the first part of the timber side. I don't hear conversations about using the timber money like we did for the ONC to get money back to the, to the roads and transportation and everything along those lines. And I don't think there was a political appetite for it. So currently, if you're, um, up in particularly it impacts class up until a mock counties, the habitat conservation plan. There is still effort to trying to reduce the amount of lumber coming out of our forests. I advocate that we need to improve our forest management because we need homes, we need the wood for the homes, but also it's going to help us with emergency management. And if there's a way that we can connect that, but I don't hear the conversations about opening a backup like we had it. It'd be nice if we can get there, but there is still such a push on the other side to even reduce it more than what we have. That some of the schools up until a mock are going to be facing closure because they rely on the timber dollar so much. So it, it would be a political push, it would be a multi-multi-year process to be able to steer that conversation. The other, remind me, the second question was again. I don't, I don't see anybody wanting to open up land use goals because as soon as you open that up. You're going to open up a massive conversation and nobody wants to tackle the land use. There is talk. About property taxes. Um, and I think, you know, there might be a group out there that's going to be looking at, uh, reset at sale. Uh, because again, we've got permanent rates, permanent rates are permanent, you can't change them and that impacts districts from the get-go. So reset at sale is the one that I hear about that, but in getting into any other land use. I, I, I don't think there's a political appetite to be able to do that. I don't see anybody advocating for that right now.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we had discussed forming a transportation district because so many people live just outside the city limits or effective economic zone. Covers roughly the school district and they use the roads rather, you know, on a daily basis office. Often without really contributing to them, but our initial. Uh, research would indicate it would require legislative support to do something like that.
Are you asking if I would support it or is that a statement?
Oh, that was what we were, we were kind of both. We would appreciate support by wondering if it would be even possible or if that would. Meet a, a large resistance from the state.
I would not resist it, but I would look into it and get, I mean, for, for me, I'm about local control and local government and it's what the people needs and it's balancing that. So I'm certainly open to the idea of that discussion. And if it proves that, you know, it's what the people need and it's what the city needs, then advocating for it and see if we can make that happen. But it'd be a, a discussion and a conversation at this point in time.
Representative.
All right, anyone else? Well, we sure want to thank you for your time, Representative Conrad. You're very informative. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate, appreciate the time. Thank you, Councilor.
All right. Items to be added to the agenda? I see none. Appearance of interested citizens. This is a time for citizen comment. The council will first take comments addressing items not listed on the agenda. For a maximum of thirty minutes. The council will then take comments addressing action items on the agenda for a maximum of thirty minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name, identify whether they're in a city resident, and if so, their ward. Please limit comments to three minutes or less with the, the council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for a public hearing may be provided only during that hearing. The council will not make any decisions based on public comment. However, staff and council. May choose to ask questions or comment following the conclusion of citizen comments. Forgive me if I get this name wrong. Michael Garwood.
Well, I'm just visiting here for a few weeks every year or so from my usual home of Las Vegas, but.
Michael, if you would state your name.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Michael Garwood. Staying with mom out in Link's Hollow, but we do much more of our shopping here than Crestwell. She's in Eugene today getting her phone fixed because that's the only guy she trusts. I suggested Sky over here at, uh, PC Garage, but anyway. Uh, so she couldn't be here, said, just keep bugging them to get the road paved. The road, the road that ended Main Street between I five and where she gets her hair done. Over there at Jan Fuller's Barber Shop, the one by the, by two store. So that's her main thing is, you know, yeah, I guess I'm not bud, budget for potholes and stuff. Me, I like coming here. I've been away for a while. I always remember my way around town where everything is easy to remember and. Where stuff is and most of the businesses survive one time or another. Sorry to see Buster's isn't there anymore, but. By flying monkeys and, uh, that, oh, the one's a little girl. What's that? The place where the gamers get together, D Light, that place. That's always nice to see it still here and Bonanza Drive up with their delicious milkshakes. So. And Stacy's with her sixteen flavors of drinks. I'll probably go there next. Y'all have a good time, right? And, uh, good luck to the new girl on the dispatcher. Everybody take it easy on her. Next time you need to call nine-one-one.
Thank you. All right, Aaron Cochran.
Mayor, council members, uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am not a resident of Cottage Grove, but I do enjoy the activities and the opportunities, uh, here in this great city. Uh, but I am a member of the VFW here up on, uh, post thirty-four seventy-three on Hillside Drive. And I became connected to the VFW because I retired from the Oregon National Guard. And my last duty assignment was HAC two and the one-six-two, which used to be in, in the old armory here, but now is in the mega armory up in Springfield. So what I'm addressing you about tonight is I'd like to start a, a conversation and kind of a starting point for myself and the BFW post. To be able to seek and look for, uh, new opportunities to, um, do other community service in this community besides what we already do with. You know, trying to help veterans and recruiting members and being part of Bohemia Mining Days. And, uh, so I'm actually here to ask your guidance of any ideas or ways. To do that and how to start the conversation and how to maybe do it outside of this forum. One of the things I'm actually interested is doing like a fitness park, um, somewhere here in town. Obviously, you know, when you think of Cottage Grove, you think of Bohemia Park, be a nice little fitness park. They do those up in. Uh, I live in Springfield is where I'm at. So there's two of them up there through Willamale Lane. One's on, uh, thirty-second street, Main Street, and one's on over by the McKenzie Willamette Hospital. Uh, they're nice parks. I'm not, uh, a big fan of them, but I've seen them in, uh, like Asian countries and, uh, New Mexico where they're really good parks, weight resistant machines. And that's what I'm here to talk about is start that conversation and kind of give me some guidance about how to connect with the city with the VFW. Now I am a VFW member. I'm not here, I, I am here as a VFW member, but I'm not on here on behalf of the VFW. So if there was interest or, you know, outside conversations we could have about this. And there was something we could do, I'd take it back to the post, vote on it and hopefully get them interested in fundraising for it. And, uh, I like that you, you counselor, uh, were talking about the skate park. I was like, oh, that's a great segue and I kind of tried to glean some information. So that's, uh, what I'm happy to talk about.
Thank you. Um, all, all of our emails are online.
Okay.
And, uh, you can email us at any time and, uh, and I'm sure city staff would be interested as well. Jake's going to give you a card.
Oh, thank you. Well, is it okay if I made a mass email or would you like me to try to pick and choose? Um, is anybody, is it okay if I group emailed everybody or me and you? I will, I will mass email everybody. Thank you for your time.
You just want to make sure you email us one at a time because we can't answer back.
Okay.
On if it's a.
I, I can absolutely do that, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That is all we have. Public hearings, we have none. All right, so we had a little bit of an issue with the consent agenda. So, uh, we had a resolution to amend the fee schedule on tonight's consent agenda. And it's, um, we used an incorrect fact, it wasn't up to date, up to date version. When we put that in there and so, uh, it was adopted on April eighth and staff is recommending removing it from the consent agenda if deemed necessary. We just need a consensus from council. All right, so we'll go ahead and remove that. It's item G on the consent agenda. Aha, resolution ordinance. Oh, yes, also. Do we need a motion for that or you can just remove?
I'm trying to remember.
Just direction.
I, I believe you're right. Um, Madam Mayor, I'll move that we, uh, remove item G from the consent agenda and place it as item B. Under resolutions and ordinances.
We have a motion with the second.
Mayor, I don't know if it matters, but, um, items that get pulled from the consent calendar go to, um, item fourteen on the agenda.
Oh. I, I will, um, amend my motion to move it to, um, item fourteen A.
I will amend my second.
Any discussion? We have a motion with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Mayor, remove approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion with the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Resolutions and ordinances. Resolution adopting the twenty-twenty-three Cottage Grove Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan Staff Report by Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, Mr. Mongol wasn't able to join us this evening. So, um, our assistant, uh, city planner, uh, Lenny Crowe will fill in and. Review on the item and, uh, address a couple of items that legal counsel. Pointed out that need to be addressed, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In the fall of twenty-twenty-one, staff began working with the Natural Hazard Mitigation Division at DLCD. To draft a new five-year natural hazards mitigation plan. This process over the past three years has involved several technical advisory committee meetings. Presentations to the community and solicitations for input at two emergency preparedness fairs. The Technical Advisory Committee was comprised of members of the council, the Planning Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, Urban Forestry Committee. South Lane Fire and Rescue, South Lane School District, Lane County Emergency Management and Dogami. The purpose of the five-year plan is to establish goals that upon completion will mitigate the impacts of natural hazards on the community. And improve general preparedness and response. Um, the attached twenty-twenty-three Cottage Grove Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan has been reviewed by FEMA. And the Oregon Office of Emergency Management for compliance and upon adoption by council, it will receive final approval. Um, upon approval, the plan will be effective from April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four to April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-nine. Staff recommends adopting the draft resolution, which adopts the twenty-twenty-three Cottage Grove Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan.
And I'd also like to point out, um, I believe that it states that in the resolution that, um. The adopted date was, uh, posted as April eighth. It should be changed to, uh, April twenty-second.
Councilor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this. Um, this was a interesting read, informative. And there are sections of this that feel like should be kind of on the front and center. This is who Cottage Grove is or, or, or we should have this information when we go into our call session. Uh, because it does a good job of kind of painting the picture of, of Cottage Grove from a number of different aspects. Um, it is my understanding that this is going to be a document that will be used to garner, uh, support from, at the federal level from. Going forward. And so I read, I read it with that in mind and, um. There, there were a few things that came out, uh, just some of them very minor, um, but. Uh, so on page eleven. And one of them I can't find again. I should have had my pencil. The first time, but page eleven, uh, third paragraph, person, or first line at the end. There's an extra space after the two thousand five and the comma. There's another one of those. And it's, it's similar with the years. Um, so I was going to search that, the series of years, but there's two of those. I don't know where the other one is. Then. Page twenty-one. Last paragraph. Second line, it references that we have a taxi service also provides local service in and around the city. I don't believe that's current anymore. Uh, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure as to, Counselor, if it is currently still in service, but. When this plan was created and drafted, it, it might have been. So, um, this plan was completed December of last year and so at the time. It, it might have well been a business, um, just with time and the fact that this took three years. Um, nitpicking things like that. I welcome the comments. Um, but there's also a section in there regarding like ice storms and our last one was years ago. So. I can make a comment to Catherine, um, at DLCD in terms of that.
Okay, well, I apologize for nitpicking.
No, not at all.
There. This, this is kind of a follow-up to the question I had for Eric on Friday morning, uh, regarding how does this plan. Maybe affect us in terms of, uh, the flood mapping and flood. Being a, a high risk or a, a risk called out in the plan. being a high risk or a risk called out in the plan in quite a lot of places. The, on page thirty-three, it looks like, and you've already prefaced this, that this was written perhaps three years ago, but the language in it is all looking forward to twenty twenty-two. And I, and I, my question was, was this, is this not representing the changes that the planning department was able to?
So, so Mayor Counsel Irvin, so this was created with the best information we had at the time. At the time, we created it using the proposed maps that were withdrawn, that have been withdrawn and re-studied by FEMA. They are not the present iteration of maps that will be considered in the next year or so. So that considerably will change when FEMA adopts a new set of flood maps. And it's our understanding that actually our flood zones are going to shrink up because of those new maps. And so this plan reflects what we have in place today. And that's what it has to reflect. We can't change, we can't use that in this plan until those new maps are created or adopted. The other thing too is, is that this Nat- Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan also is a criteria for us to help with our community rating system, which helps, you know, score higher points so that we can reduce the flood insurance costs to folks because we have a guiding plan on how we try to minute, minute minimize the flood hazard potential in the zone. So it is a criteria for us to get those improved rates that are passed on to our residents in our city.
Well, I was, yeah, I guess I'm having difficulty conceptualizing what we're, what this is. Is this open for edit or suggestion?
Mayor, actually, I don't believe it is, Counsel Irvin. We can probably correct the space that's missing. But this has been approved by the state and the federal government. All we're doing now is implementing it. The place, and I'm sorry, maybe it wasn't shared with you, but when the council received the presentation before we sent it off to the state and the federal government for their review and their approval, that's when we probably should have incorporated some changes. Now, that doesn't mean that Ms. Crowe couldn't talk to the DLCD representative that helped us, that guided this process. But we had a working committee that worked with this, then we had a presentation before the city council. And then Senate, you know, incorporated the comments. At that time, council had sent it to the federal government and the state for their approval. So I apologize if that was a misstep, but it does have to be renewed every five years. So we'll have, we can keep it out. If we can't make a correction or a change to reflect your comments today, then we'll have to make those in five years. And that's when the new FEMA maps would be incorporated in the plan too.
Ms. Roberts, we have a resolution number?
Two, one, three, three.
Counsel Flack?
Madam Mayor, I move that the council adopt resolution two, one, three, three.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I just had a point of clarification in your opening narrative. Ms. Crowe, you said that the plan upon approval would go from April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four to April twenty-first, twenty twenty-eight. And I just want to, or excuse me, you said twenty-nine, but I want to clarify, we have written twenty-eight.
Correct. I did speak with our Counselor Mayor, as speak with our DLCD representative today, this afternoon, to confirm, just to make sure. And it is through twenty twenty-nine. So.
Okay.
I know the memo was twenty-eight.
Quick point of order. We don't have a second.
Yeah. Sorry, I think I had my hand up beforehand. Sorry. Second.
Okay, perfect.
We have a motion with a second. Any discussion? Well, the recorder, please call the roll.
Aye.
Counsel Savage?
Aye.
Counsel Stunnett?
Aye.
Counsel Drier?
Aye.
Counsel Irvin?
Aye.
Counsel Flack?
Aye.
Mayor Solzbi?
Aye. Motion carries. Business from the city council. Item A. Award of South R Street Right-of-Way Improvements Contract Staff Report by Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. So on March twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, Cottage Grove posted an invitation to bid for the South R Street Right-of-Way Improvement Project. Sealed bids were due by two P M on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four at Branch Engineering located at three ten Fifth Street in Springfield. The intent to bid was advertised on March twentieth, two thousand twenty-four in the Daily Journal of Commerce. Nine bids were received and opened on April eleventh. Bids ranged from six hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-five cents to eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Pacific Excavation provided the low bid of six hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars, twenty-five cents and is recommended by the city engineer, Damian Gilbert, of Branch Engineering. This work will extend our street from South, excuse me, from Sweet Lane into the industrial city industrial park connecting to the existing portion of South R Street intersecting near Carnegie. City utilities, water, sewer, storm, and fiber will also be installed. So the recommendation from staff is that city council move to award the South R Street Right-of-Way Improvements Project to Pacific Excavation and authorize the city manager to sign the contract and all associated documents. The cost of, is six hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three, twenty-five. And this project qualifies to use our system development fees that have been collected. And this is new capacity. So the street water, wastewater, storm, drainage, SDCs will pay for this project.
Ms. Conley?
I have a conflict of interest. I believe my son-in-law works for Pacific Excavation.
That's for Nell Stapp.
Okay.
Counsel Meridie?
Oh, sorry.
This is best.
Yes.
Counsel Flack?
Mr. Counsel President, I move that the city council award the South R Street Right-of-Way Improvements Project to Pacific Excavation and authorize the city manager to sign the contract and all associated documents.
Counsel President, I had requested, and the mayor acknowledged, I had a question for Director Stewart.
Point of order. We need to have a second.
Other than that. Excuse me. We just need a second. Then the discussion, Counsel Meridie can ask all the questions he wants to. The motion's been made. It just needs a second. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Director Stewart, I believe that we've used Pacific Excavation before successfully. Is that correct for other projects?
Counsel President, Counsel Meridie, that is correct. Pacific Excavation has done probably five other projects since I've been in the director position here. And they've done an excellent job on all the projects that they've completed for the city.
That was my memory. I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Other discussion?
I was going to reiterate a question I had from Friday, and actually, I want to apologize as the public works director, because I asked him where the money was coming from. And oh, my gosh, it's right here in the memorandum. So I apologize. And thank you for offering that without giving me a look. I'm just kidding. Thank you.
We have a motion with a second? The recorder? Hold on. Or is it just, this is not a resolution? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I said son-in-law, but I meant stepson. So makes no difference. Yes. Okay. Yeah. Concerns from council. Counsel Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for setting a great example for when we should recuse. It's hard to remember that. And so thank you for bringing that to the forefront. A gentleman earlier mentioned the fitness park. And if I recall, I believe that there's something going into Bohemia Park that is something along the lines of being fitness-esque. Is that correct, Mr. Stewart?
Mayor, Counsel Savage, well, we have a splash pad. I don't know. It might get the kids running around playing, so that might give some fitness. But nothing specifically for fitness stations. I would share with the council that. And I also shared this in an email to our pre, our commenter this evening, that there has been efforts with partnerships with Peace Health and other entities to actually create a fitness station corridor, like down the Row River Trail and various different things where we could add some fitness stations. Unfortunately, it just, you know, it dies with the individual that was kind of carrying the torch on trying to make that happen. So and there's also opportunities I shared with, there's grant opportunities for fitness stations and fitness stuff. So I don't believe at the present time that I'm aware of anything on city parks that's specifically for fitness stations or fitness, fitness specific. But I do believe that there would be an opportunity to have those conversations and work with the individual to see if something could be done.
Thank you so much. I've got just a couple, if you bear with me. That brings me to the other park topic. A few weeks ago, I had a constituent call me and say, hey, you're the counselor in my ward, and we've got this park, and we want a basketball hoop. Okay, well, let's, let me pass it along. And so I called Mr. Stewart and we had a conversation, and it sounds like it's a go. It will take time to do the engineering and like massage the reality of when and how and all of that, but it's, it's happening. So I thought that was really exciting. So I thought I'd share that. Counsel Meridie, you had mentioned something at the beginning about a possibility of what can we do for buildings that are vacant in our town. And I recall other towns, and I'm not sure how it happens. I don't know if it's something from the council that just then appears, but there's a vacancy tax. And so if a building is vacant for so long, you can tax it. And the way that I've heard other towns do is they will show an invoice with a tax, but like for the first six months, give them grace. And so the balance is zero because we refund the tax to give people a chance and educate them, you know, even six months to a year. But then after that, there is a vacancy tax. So if you're going to have an empty building here, we're going to tax you on it. Is that really what you want, you know, and it's to help move things along? So I don't know the mechanism of having those conversations, but that's what sparked my thoughts when you mentioned that earlier.
If we can find some examples. If you can find, yeah, because I've been trying to look myself and I haven't been successful.
Yeah, thank you. And then just as a reminder, being on the board of the National League of Cities, I've got a board meeting in June. So I will be heading down to Rancho Cordova for three days for a board meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart, did you have something to add?
Mayor, thank you. Counsel Savage, I'd just give an update on the basketball hoop. We have researched prices for permanent hoops with poles. I did donate my basketball hoop to the city today. So staff will go out there, pick it up. It's a portable one. And that'll get something started right away. And then as we look for something permanent, we'll see how that works.
Mr. Saraway?
Just to pick up on the issue of the vagrancy tax. Now, this is definitely something I've talked with Councilmember Meridie about. And we're definitely looking to see if we can find examples from other cities. I've been unsuccessful in finding anything in the state of Oregon at this point. So if, you know, from National League of Cities, is there something that other, you know, you can find from other states? It's certainly something we can sit and talk with the city attorney about. But yeah, I'd love to see examples of how other cities have dealt with this issue.
Anyone else? Counsel Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I know it's hot in here and it's late, so I'm going to try and go quick. I have a lot on my list, but I attended municipal court on Thursday, and that was really interesting. It was nice to be able to see what, what we offer here as far as access to justice in our own community. Judge Fisher and his staff are very kind, even tempered. I saw people sharing personal milestones with them while they were still dealing with the municipal court dealings. So it demonstrated that people are building relationships and they're the staff are trying to take advantage of the intervention to improve people's lives. So that was very fruitful and the judge was open to answering my questions at the end. So I really appreciated that. Some of you may know that the council only has two staff that we supervise. One's the city manager, who we see a lot. And one's the municipal court judge, who we don't often see. So I was able to get to see him in action. I hope that we will take advantage of the deflection program that the county's going to institute in response to what Representative Charlie Conrad talked about HB four zero zero two, measure one-ten reform. The county's got to stand up and invent whatever a deflection program's going to be. And I hope we can be at the table because I know that they talk about city of Eugene and Springfield Municipal Court and E P D and S P D at the table. And I'm like, we're down here too. You know, we also have needs. Chief Chase, I don't know if you want to address ICU wave in.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel Drew. Yes, so part of that standing up that deflection program is going to require it be done at the county level. So what deflection looks like around the state of Oregon will be defined in each one of these counties. And as Representative Conrad talked about, Marion County is an example that a lot of counties are looking at. But I've already been in conversations with, with my counterparts around the county, and it will, it will include all the chiefs in Lane County and the sheriff as well with the district attorney's office. So we will have the, and other stakeholders. But yes, we're, we will have a seat at that table and, and have those conversations about what that looks like.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Also, I had the League, the League of Oregon Cities Government Policy Committee this week. And we talked about public safety financing. Also about how drunk people are very expensive for communities because they do a lot of damage. And beer and wine taxes don't cover how expensive they can be for our community. They also talked about Oregon Government Ethics Commission and what's happened in particular, how they have managed our case and the complaint. They were very interested in that. And the league may again take up having a seat at the table or at least having legal representation on the O G E C committee because it seems like they don't have legal experts at that table who do public meetings laws day in and day out. Where but eighty percent of their, the work that O G E C is reviewing is related to local government complaints. So they could use an enhancement on that board. So that was very interesting. That's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Flack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, Lane Area Commission on Transportation had just, I, all of the representatives, myself included, bring a wish list of projects to them in case there was some a wish list of projects to them in case there was some extra funding coming around. Mr. Stewart and his department were awesome. We came up with five projects that we want. We're now trying to come down with one because right now they're like 60 projects throughout the act, which obviously won't be funded. So I will update you on the progress. I'm a little frustrated with the process. It's not been super well articulated or transparent, but it is an opportunity. And so I'm just going to take the high road and say, I'm excited to see that maybe we can get a project won. That meeting was last week. Also was El Rapa last week. We are in budget process. And so that's an interesting thing. The state actually raised the Title V, which is your big polluters fees by like 80 some percent, or I mean, yeah, 80 some percent. And so there was a lot of pushback from, you know, some of the, the industry folks. The good news is I've actually been complaining about the fees not keeping up and the revenues not maintaining. I'm actually pushing though that if those revenues are more than our costs, that we find some mechanism to actually put that back to industry. So that's kind of where I'm, I'm working on in that. We are in an executive director search, and I think we're in the final stages of that. Last, I just want to also kind of bring, bring up the Roberts rules things. I certainly don't mean to be picky, but you know, I don't even mind having a conversation beforehand. That, that's something that's not in Roberts rules. But once there's a motion, the next step has to be either a second or it dies for failure for a second. So just, you know, for our city recorder and for all of us not forgetting, oh, wait, there was a motion and nobody seconded it. I don't mean to be picky, but that is one of my little OCD things. I apologize. Thank you.
Council Mary Day.
Thank you, Mayor. At the work session, it was, I, I discovered or learned that our planned work session on May 18th was scheduled for half a day. And I also learned that we were going to be reviewing our decisions up to that point and the laws. And I don't understand how we're going to be able to address the concerns that the community has about course corrections of conditions of the camps. What will we be doing in case the funding is not available to fund the 99 site? And generally, how are we going to proceed into the future? So I was hoping that I had blocked out my entire day for that, thinking it would be an all day session because I don't even think a day will be able to really address our problems and needs in that. So I just wanted to know if, are other members of the council available for a longer session that day on the work session?
May I propose an in-between option if we could get some of the history things ahead of time? And we can read that so we can come fully prepared. And also I wanted to thank the mayor for putting together, which dates, listing what things I should go back and look at because I wasn't on the council when y'all had a very in-depth discussion about this last time. So I would support being able to read a lot of stuff ahead of time and then come in ready to work.
Mr. Sauerwein.
Yeah, as we discussed on Friday, I was planning to cover this under the city manager's report. And we'd ask council on Friday to, you know, take it over the weekend and see whether or not they would be willing to do a full day. Staff is certainly prepared to, so everybody can fully participate, to schedule the work session starting at 8:30 and going till four, probably with a morning break and an afternoon break and a lunch. As we discussed on Friday, this is going to be an incredibly busy week. We have a council meeting and two budget committee meetings. And then we have the workshop on Saturday. So just trying to be mindful of everybody's time. But, you know, we certainly don't want to cut it short and not give everybody a chance to fully participate.
I would also remind the council that we've managed to push it out this far. We've been asked, we've been trying to schedule it and trying to schedule it. And I know it's everything at once, but we, it's been on the radar for a good while.
Council Irvin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to also reiterate what we brought up on Friday morning, look forward to the budget process meeting. I wanted to thank city manager Sauerwein and Bert for meeting and, and just going over the, the budget and general budget philosophy and mentioned out of that meeting, where the, where the policy that's set by the council comes into the budget. And, and just looking forward to reviewing that as a council as we lead up into that. But it was a good reminder for me to be paying attention to that ahead of time. I also brought up a concern that was raised about scheduling the community center. I don't know if you were going to be speaking on that as well. And then just to the gentleman who spoke during appearance of interest as citizens on the workout. I know in some of the lead up to our, Council Mary Day and I's efforts on the skate park, that was one of the things that was coming up. How do we, how do we build a facility or envision a facility that really caters to bringing all the age groups together? And this workout facility came up in that multiple times. Also had the occasion to meet with Public Works Director in Veneta and gave me a tour of their, their park and their concert area. And they, they were able to incorporate some of those features there, albeit on a minimal basis. But it does seem to have quite, quite a lot of appeal to all age groups. So that's, that's why I'd be interested to continue those. I don't know if you want to share the, the good news on the the grant from that that you've worked on.
Yeah, we did get a little distracted with the possibility of a rec district and kind of put our skate park plans on hold so we could see if we could roll them into the rec district. And so now we passed the time to spend the money for the grant, but they're giving us an extension from the Yarg Foundation, Yarg Family Foundation to do the compute, the community input piece. I was very relieved.
Anyone else?
All right, I carry, I have a question. And I don't know if this is the right time to ask or not, but I'm wondering about our executive session. A, and, and it says, help pursuant to ORS 192.660, consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. And does this absolutely have to be an executive session? Because I would think that there would be some benefit for the public to hear if it is not against the law, then a transparency. So that's my legal question to you.
So it's the council's privilege to waive. It isn't my privilege to waive. And I, I would think that the full council would want to know what it is that they're waiving. What information is it that they are releasing to the public? So my thought is you hold an executive session to consider it, and then you can decide as a body if that's a privilege you want to waive.
So the council has, does not know what this is about?
Do they? Okay, so, so no, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of blank looks.
I was just going to add that I think there were four of you, actually maybe five, that stopped in and previewed the documents just so that there was enough time for those documents to be reviewed. But there's a, a couple that haven't had that opportunity and wouldn't acknowledge them, what it's about.
Okay, yeah. And so I think it's premature to have that conversation. I think it probably is going to be a conversation. The group will want to hold privately initially.
But what is talked about in executive session? I think the public would have a right to know. And so that's my question too, because it's an executive session. Will we be allowed to talk about?
No, not unless this body decides yes.
That's, I'm having a problem with that because I feel like we should have probably all looked at this so we could have decided before we were stuck going into executive session. And so I'm wondering if we should hold on this, give council time to read the documents. And then we can decide as a council if we want to do this in executive session or as a public. Because I just don't want it to have any appearance of anything being hidden.
I will want to talk to the council privately first. And then the council can decide what next step it wants to take. I, I think waiving an attorney client privilege fully is not a drastic measure. It's a, it isn't something you do lightly, and there are options that I would want to talk with the council about. But, but not having an executive session tonight. I mean, it's nine. By rules, you end at nine. Unless the presiding officer or the body extends by increments of 30 minutes. And I had specifically offered that I think everybody really wants to read this, but my advice.
I would not mind putting this off. Just, it's a pretty, if you haven't read it, I don't know who hasn't read it. It's a pretty substantial reading.
Also happy to meet and give a brief overview. So I, I, it is, it is this group's choice to do what they want.
I don't have any concern putting this off, but I, having read it, would not want to do anything without having an executive session first. So my two cents would be let's have that first so we can find out all the legal ramifications of anything we do before we actually do it. That would be my suggestion.
But we, for those of us that stopped in today, Mayor, that's, that was an executive session, effectively, with, just to clarify, because I think what I'm hearing is there's almost a catch 22 of this was information that we otherwise could talk about and raise concerns about. And, you know, bring, bring forward. As soon as it goes into executive session, now you're under penalty of potential civil penalty. Or if, if there's a breach. And so that's, that's restricting. That's, that's waiving the ability to discuss things openly. And basically shuts everything down.
Temporarily.
Relegate it to, to executive session. And so I think that's the concern that's being waived. There was a freedom to talk about these things prior to the confidential document.
So let's be clear. Each counselor has been invited to review a privileged confidential communication from attorney to client. That is a privilege that's held by the city. The document is privileged, and no one counselor has the ability to waive that privilege. The executive session then would be held to discuss the contents of that document. So no executive session has been held so far. The executive session isn't the thing that invokes the confidentiality. It's the fact that there's legal analysis. That's the part that is confidential.
To clarify, because it's pretty evident that we have to clarify things really, really well around this stuff. The subject matter itself, what, say, the, the concerns that had been raised, that is not executive session exclusive or attorney client. It's only the, the input on those matters given by you that cannot be discussed. Is that correct? Or is it not?
Yep, there's been, there, there is information in the public that if you choose to talk about it, you could. It's a little awkward right now because because the document itself is mine. I can't talk about it publicly.
Point of order. I don't, I don't know what it's called, but it feels really awkward that I don't, I don't know what we're even talking about because I work late and I didn't have an opportunity to review the privileged document. So if we can just wait and have an executive session and then talk about what to do next, I would appreciate that.
I, I understand that. That's my concern. As soon as it gets pushed into the executive session territory, it limits what can be talked about.
We can talk about it after. If, if we decide in that executive session, you don't, I don't even know what we're talking about.
All right, so we are in with the consensus that we'll wait till everyone has a chance to review. And then we can talk about if we indeed, the ramifications of hearing it in executive session and how that can limit what we can say to the public. And move from there.
That's fine with me. I just, I really don't want the misconception that having the executive session is the thing that invokes confidentiality. It isn't. It isn't. It's the document. That's, that's what's confidential. So that's what I, I'm like, I don't know how to clarify. The only reason you have an executive session is to hear from me.
So can't we just have the executive session to hear more, to learn more? I mean, we're already here. Ms. Connolly has come here to do this.
I would, I personally, I'd rather give them time to read it before we.
But that's why we're here. I mean, the document was going to be presented tonight to all of us. There was just a late afternoon email that said if you want to come down. I mean, this was the original plan was to get the document at the executive session. Documents aren't usually supplied beforehand.
It was just a rather large, that's, that's why.
Mayor, I appreciate that. I'm fine with just having an executive session. If I need longer to review it, I'll take, I'll come back. But now I'm very interested and I'd like to see it tonight.
Those are my concerns. What, what is the view of council?
I already stated, I, I would not want to incur any liability for us or the city without having talked to our attorney in executive session.
To go home at this point, but what the consensus says.
I'm willing to extend another half an hour.
Second, is that a motion to extend?
No, it's just getting a consensus.
I don't much care when we do it. I'm here.
I could go either way, go home or do this session. What is the majority wish?
So I, I prefer to have them read, read beforehand. I know Greg, Council Irvin feels that way. Two that are up in the air, so two that are for.
The way the council rules read is either the presiding officer can extend by 30 minutes or a majority of the council can extend by 30 minutes. It'd be nice if everybody would agree. We don't have to bring it to a vote, but that's what the rule says.
Thank you. Would, would the council, council rules require an extension of the executive, is the executive session part of the two hour limit of our meeting?
I think so. It's, it's a public meeting and it's part of the public meeting. It's not a separate meeting.
Okay. So the work session did not count.
No, correct. That's a separate meeting. That was, that's.
This one's gonna.
Well, why don't we just go to a vote? So all those in favor of extending by 30 minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
My two cents on waiting for the executive session is as a council, we tend to kick things down the road, right? Why not have the conversation? We're already here. Why wait? We're already here. But with that, we can extend, finish up the meeting and discuss later, whatever.
This is, this is an item that I don't feel is time sensitive in my personal opinion. Would you agree?
That's really, that is not a, that's not a legal question. I am perfectly happy waiting and I'm also happy presenting this evening. I, I did understand that people might want to review it in advance. But that's as far as my opinion goes.
Are we okay with extending to our next meeting?
Um, I saw, I saw four votes for just extend by 30 minutes. We still have two agenda items, uh, city managers report and legal counsel. So if we could just get those done and then we can see where we're at.
I might add, we did pull Adam off the consent calendar as we don't want to, please.
Report from the city manager.
Well, good evening, Your Honor, members of the city council. You know, in my career, I have built two skateboard parks and they are arguably the most fun and enjoyable projects I've ever been involved in. They're really an opportunity to bring the whole community together, have nice planning sessions with, you know, our local shredders and folks interested in being a part of the skateboard process. So I would really look forward to the opportunity to be part of a third skateboard park. And as brought, brought up by Counselor Irvin, on Friday, we talked about scheduling at the community center. And I'm going to be meeting later this week with the folks at the community center to talk about scheduling of their facilities. This is also part of a broader question. I'm having conversations with the city recorder as well about scheduling for the Armory and other city facilities. So it's really an opportunity to review all of that. Couple of really good pieces of news. The Eugene Symphony will be here on Monday, July 22nd. Now that is a city council meeting night. As we get closer, we'll be talking with you about canceling that city council meeting. Also, the president has signed the emergency proclamation regarding the ice storm. And city staff, thank you very much, is already in the process of submitting our request for public assistance application. By the way, for those of you keeping a score at home, Cottage Grove's total for the storm is already north of $2.3 million. Now, we'll be asking for a minimum reimbursement of 75%. Maybe it'll go higher than that. And, you know, I gave up predicting what the federal government will or won't do a long time ago. But I think it is highly unlikely that we'll get that reimbursement before the beginning of the next fiscal year. As was brought up earlier, we do have our homeless workshop coming up. And Jake and I spent some time with the folks from St. Vincent's last week. We went to Eugene and we toured their facilities. They will be doing the facilitation for us at the, at the workshop. And at this point, we've kind of got a general agenda. Our goal is the city council meeting that is on Monday before the workshop to be providing you with the workshop information at that meeting. So to the points that was raised here earlier, we're hoping to have that information to you, you know, about a week before the actual workshop. And as, as was discussed earlier, we're looking at this point of basically covering three things. First, a three-year history of both councils' actions, what money was budgeted, how that money was spent, up to and including the recent cleanups that we've been doing at the two camps. And then the St. Vincent de Paul folks will be, will be drawing on their expertise to really give us a discussion of what is the current situation legally regarding homeless camps and homelessness. For some of you like me, I got up this morning and listened to the Supreme Court arguments. I'm certainly not an attorney. And so I don't claim to have completely understood everything that I was, that was said. But understand that the legal parameters that we work within are a bit of a moving target. And as we've discussed before, the state of Oregon has actually codified essentially the Ninth Circuit decision. So again, you know, we're having them help us with that kind of environment. And then finally, as we've discussed before, we'll be talking about some actionable options for the 12th Street Douglas and Highway 99 camps. And now, since this is going to be a busy week for us, we said on Friday, I said a few moments ago, now initially, we were looking at, you know, trying to give, trying to accommodate people's bandwidth for the week. But if the council is interested in having a full day on Saturday, the 18th, staff is certainly supportive of that and would like to, like I said earlier, maybe start at about 8:30, you know, do coffee and donuts from 8:30 to nine. And then have, you know, a three-hour morning session broken up with a, with a break somewhere. We'll take an hour for lunch, come back at one. And, you know, again, have an afternoon till four and we'll take a break somewhere in the middle of that. That way, all council members will have an opportunity to participate as much as they wish. But, you know, again, as we said on Friday, I, I kind of want to hear from you guys. You know, how do you want us to structure this meeting on Saturday?
Thank you. Is there a way to be open ended about that? Because you might be right by the time we get there. We might be shot. I mean, everything we're doing is, is in, in addition to everything else that we do as human beings. I could, I could foresee being completely wiped by mid afternoon. I'm, I'm just asking.
Well, I guess the, the most direct answer I can give you is any council meeting in the workshop is a council meeting. You know, the first step is to approve the agenda to some extent. So, you know, if, if we get to that meeting and, you know, people want to, you know, rework the agenda somehow, we certainly can.
I can tell you, as you know, I, I, I was here for both of the other two that were scheduled. But unfortunately, this hit on a date that is my sister-in-law's 60th birthday celebration in Arizona. And so I will be out of town zooming in to this meeting. And that is her actual birthday. And so, but I, you know, if the council wants to do a full day, it would be tough for me, but I will do it. And, but I would rather see a little shorter day for myself. Although I realize the importance of it, so.
Well, I'm not really conceptualizing it as a day. I know you have to schedule and you have to do those things, but the goal is that we come to a decision that we can, as best as possible, all live with, that best represents our constituents and best serves the city while, you know, in every facet of that. And that'd be fantastic. We come to that in half a day? Really? I don't know. I don't, I'm not sure what is going to happen. And so I don't, I don't see this as a one and done kind of thing. And because of that, I think if we get to, you know, half a day, we take a temperature, we feel, we see where things are. And we just say, how do we best go forward and schedule the next? Keep going until we hash it out. I, yeah, I, I am under no illusions that this is going to be some magic bullet day.
Thanks. I, I like the approach there to take the temperature as we're able. I, I don't, I'm not sure the goal could or should be to make a decision that day. So maybe we can temper our expectations on getting to the, to the actual bottom of this. It might loosen the pressure on us to, to solve an intractable side of the problem in one afternoon.
A, as a practical matter, we are scheduling this as a workshop rather than a council meeting. So, you know, you can provide consensus and direction to, to staff. But, you know, at the end of the day, we're not going to be asking you to make, you know, to vote up or down on any major proposals.
Mr. Sturrock.
I might add, Mayor, Mr. Sarwani, it's my understanding that the meeting that was that following Monday is been rescheduled for Tuesday to accommodate being able to potentially take some action as a result of the work session. Is that right?
Exactly. I mean, as we previously discussed, you know, the, the next council meeting, now, again, I, I don't want to presuppose what the council's going to do. But if we do receive direction at the end of the workshop from council, staff certainly be prepared to come back at your next regular meeting and, you know, bring, bring actionable items for you to vote on.
The council meeting then will be May, May 26th?
So I don't have a calendar from us. Monday is a holiday.
It'll be, it'll be May 28th. Because the 27th is Memorial Day.
Yeah, we'd be moving it to, to the Tuesday after the Monday holiday.
It is hot. All right. Are you done?
Hi.
Okay.
That would conclude my report, Your Honor. Thank you very much.
Business from the city attorney.
Sorry, thank you. Well, thanks for having me tonight. Just to close the loop, I did look up that section 13 of the council rules regarding consent agendas. So in the future, we don't need a motion. Did not want to change everything that was already unfolding. But it's any item placed on the consent agenda shall be, shall be removed at the request of the mayor or a counselor prior to the time a vote is taken on consent agenda. So there you go. So adding something needs a motion, yes, which makes a lot of sense. Okay, thanks. That's all from me.
So now items removed from the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move that the council adopt the attached draft resolution. And do we want to make this 2134? Okay, so I move that the council adopt Resolution 2134.
Second.
We have a motion with a second? Any discussion? While the recorder, please call the roll.
Counselor Drier?
Hi.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Counselor Merity?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Stunnett?
Aye.
Mayor Solston?
Aye. unanimous. Sorry, Madam Mayor, may I just interject? So just to be clear, resolutions can be on the consent agenda. We cleared that up over the weekend. But because this had to do with fees, it was taken off. The opportunity to comment from interested individuals was in various meetings previously. So I just, I just wanted all of that on the record to clarify if and when members of the public see resolutions on the consent agenda moving forward. That's acceptable.
So we did remove executive session 15B. It's been canceled. It was scheduled a bit prematurely and there's no content to be shared as of yet. So now we are back to the executive session, item A. Counsel Irvin?
Thanks, I had a couple of minutes to think. My, my concern, I guess, it, my, my suggestion to either it to delay or as I'm thinking about it more, even reconsider the requirement to have executive session is that if the content is privileged, I guess I don't know what, what is needed beyond that to, to have that information, to have retained it. Not sure what decision we have to come to as a, or, or guidance or anything. In any discussion we would have in an executive session, wherever that conversation goes presumably, this is where I'm asking for advice. Effectively narrows what can be talked about in public. So I mean, we asked for something, we received it. If we read the information, we have it. What more is there to do?
That is the best question I've heard all night. So nothing. It, 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 the only thing is that it is a confidential communication from attorney to client. If it's to be discussed, it would be discussed in executive session. There's no requirement to hold the executive session. So that decision could be deferred.
It's my thought there is, I don't see any value. I guess, I could, I would hear anyone would rather, would speak that there is value.
Well, I think before we could move on with that, they would need to know exactly what it's about. So to read the documents, I guess, I, I know that Counselor Drier hasn't, but I don't know. And so we could decide on if we need an executive session after they've been read in full.
I mean, individual counselors could report their desire to city manager. I, I do know that we're coming up on that 30 minutes. And so another vote or extension would be necessary if that influences anybody's. But I'm fresh. I'm raring to go. So don't do anything because of me.
I would like to see it go that way.
Madam Mayor, as I said before, I'm happy to put this off. I just didn't want us to talk about it publicly before we had that opportunity to speak. But I'm totally fine putting this off to the next meeting or not even addressing it at all. My concern was just around if we did discuss it, how we would do that.
Sounds like we have a consensus.
Thank you, Mayor. So to clarify, we can all read the privileged material. We cannot talk about it regardless of whether we go into executive session because it's privileged.
For the record, correct.
And sorry, we'll read it here on our own schedules in some way.
Yeah, so best practice is always is to not disseminate executive session or, or confidential privileged documents. And yes, to come in, I think as this council has done previously with other documents, whether they were produced by me or not, review it, consider if you have questions. And then we'll go from there is, is what I'm hearing.
Do we need to do anything with the removal of that executive session?
Nope, just not holding it tonight.
So with that, it looks like we are adjourned.